It is 7:35 PM on Wednesday, October 20th, 2021. Good evening. My name is Christian Klein. I'm the Chair of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals, calling this meeting of the board to order. I'd like to confirm that all members and anticipated officials are present from the zoning board of appeal. Roger Dupont.
Here.
Patrick Hanlon. Putting on his headset. Evening, Patrick. Kevin Mills.
Here.
Sean O'Rourke.
Here.
Aaron Ford.
Good evening here.
Good evening, and Steven Revolak.
Here.
Good evening, all one and all. For the town, I know Mr. Mr. Allerelli is tied up in another meeting, but he'll be joining us. Vincent Lee is here, though.
Here.
Then I could see you and Kelly Lineema, the town's new assistant director, the part of planning and community development is here as well.
Yeah.
Good to see you. Consultants for the board, Paul Haverdy.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening. Good to see you. And from Beta Group, we have Marty Novas here and Tyler Derris here.
Good evening.
Good evening to you both.
Hi, good evening.
And appearing on behalf of Thorndike Place. Stephanie Kiefer is here. Good evening, Stephanie. And joining you, it appears, is most of the team who we've been getting to know well over the past few years.
So we have, just quickly, we have Art Clipfell and Gwen Noyes from Oak Tree. We have our project engineer, John Hessian. We have, from Viness, we have both this evening, Derek Roach and Scott Thornton. Our housing consultant, Bob Angler, is on board, and I believe that Scott Glassock, our architect, is also here, but I'm not seeing him on my screen. Maybe he's not joined on yet.
But Scott is in a car. This is Arthur talking, and if we need him, he is on call. He can show anything after 8:30 that anyone would like to see. It was his message to me after 8:30. But he's listening.
Welcome, one and all. So this open meeting of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely, consistent with an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16th, 2021. This act includes an extension until April 1st, 2022, of the remote meeting provisions of Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, which suspended the requirement to hold all public meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to continue to participate remotely. While the bodies may continue to meet remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. An opportunity for public participation will be provided during the public comment period during each public hearing. For this meeting, the zoning board of appeals has convened a video conference via the Zoom app with online and telephone access is listed on the agenda posted to the town's website, identifying how the public may join. This meeting is being recorded, and it will be broadcast by ACMI. Please be aware that attendees are participating by a variety of means. Some attendees are participating by video conference. Other participants are participating by computer, audio, or by telephone. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, your screen name, or another identifier. Please take care to not share personal information. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We ask you to please maintain decorum during the meeting, including displaying an appropriate background. All supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body are available on the town's website, unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. As Chair, I reserve the right to take items out of order in the interest of promoting an orderly meeting. That is not an issue this evening, as we have only one item on our agenda. That brings up item two, which is Thorndike Place. Now turning, returning to the comprehensive permit hearing for Thorndike Place, or likely the last time. At the prior hearing on October 5th, 2021, the board reviewed the draft decision, including findings, conditions, and waiver requests, as prepared by the board's consultants. We heard from the applicant and members of the public, both in regards to the draft decision and regarding the project in general. Several people raised concerns that the version of the draft decision posted to the board's website included many tracks changes, making the draft difficult to follow and understand. It was requested that a cleaned up version of the draft be prepared and posted for review. The time period for closing the public hearing was set to expire on October 8th. That would not leave sufficient time to reissue the draft and hold a hearing before the public hearing period ended. The board negotiated with the applicant for additional time to prepare and review a clean draft. After reviewing possible dates with the applicant and consultants, it was agreed to continue the public hearing through today, Wednesday, October 20th, and extend the public hearing period to Thursday, October 21st. The board voted to approve both of those dates. The clean draft was prepared by the board and posted to the board's website on October 13th. Additional comments received by the board have been posted to tonight's agenda and/or to the board's website. The plan for tonight's hearing is to review any outstanding questions regarding the draft decision. After the conclusion of this discussion, the board will take public comments. Thereafter, the board will vote on closing the public hearing. During the public comment period this evening, the board will only take comments related to specific items in the draft decision. The board has been impressed by the compassionate concern expressed by the public in regards to this project over the last five years. The discussion has been thought-provoking, informed, and sometimes quite heated. Please know that we have heard you, and we are well aware of your concerns, and we understand the uncertainty you feel with regards to this project. We have heard you loud and clear. However, the board is now at the point where we need to close the public hearing, as is required by the state regulations governing the conduct of a comprehensive permit hearing. For this reason, I'm asking to limit public comment to only those items that are in the draft decision or are missing from the draft decision. Please try to refrain from concerns about the project in general or issues unrelated to the draft decision. So turning to the draft decision, are there any questions from members of the board? And what are we still looking for clarification on? Mr. Revolak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I basically just have one question, you know, that's that's still outstanding to me. In the finding section, there are paragraphs 64B and 65A. Both of these paragraphs contain the language "proposed condition to be inserted at the appropriate place." So in the case of 65A, I believe this, the appropriate conditions appear in C1E. And I think the corresponding one for 64B is in C1D. And I just would like to, you know, if Beta or town staff has any you know, if they agree or disagree with that, basically, I'm looking, you know, to see if they have any advice on, you know, whether those, you know, proposed to be inserted are, you know, you're relatively taken care of in C1D and C1E, or if some merging will be necessary. That is my question, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. 64B, 64A, and 64B and 65As.
That is correct.
We'll zip up for that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
This is Pat. I had the privilege of trying to put together the factual statements for the cleaned up or quasi-cleared up thing. Originally, if the board may remember, and the public may remember, in the previous draft, there was a finding which, in effect, included these as a condition. Because we did this without, those of us who were involved in the cleanup effort couldn't couldn't coordinate with one another. When I tried to put this into a form where there was a finding here and a condition envisioned later on, I was not able to know exactly where that would go. And so I left the substance of what was previously there in sort of conditioned format with the thought that it could be placed somewhere else. Since then, in reviewing the decision, I've noticed that there's an overlap with some other places, as Mr. Revolak has pointed out. And I can just say that because of the open meeting law restrictions on putting this together, there hasn't been an opportunity to, or was not an opportunity, to compare the language between those two sections. And having said that, I think I've given Beta time to look it up and answer whether or not they're right. I had the impression that what was in the draft, which came from Beta and the ACC, was, to the extent to which it was different, somewhat improved over the draft that was previously in the findings.
Any further, Mr. Revolak?
Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, let me just say that what I said didn't really answer the question whether there was any merging to be done. I don't, I don't know if if people are, if Beta is, and our, the experts are up on the language enough to make that comparison at the moment. But all I had to say is, in effect, that effort has not yet been made because of the way we split up the task.
Yes, I mean, um, you know, I, this is, I know, it's a, it's a, it's a big question to be answered, you know, just off the cuff. But if it's possible to, you know, get an opinion at some point during the night, particularly with finding 64B and condition C1D, I think that would be, will be helpful as we go into deliberations.
And certainly, if we also submitted into the record prior to this was a draft decision as marked up by by Beta Group. So we do have a set of comments from them on the prior draft decision. So if the, if those comments are included in there, that's great. If not, if there's no, we could provide a little guidance before the end of the evening, that'd be, that'd be great.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Marty Nova with Beta Group. I'm going to have to look and compare the two. This is really, I just got into the, into the office, and I'm looking at the clean version, so I'm going to have to compare. So I can do that now.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Members of the board who have questions on the draft? Heads. I had tried to read through all my notes that I've been taking over the last year on this project and see if there were anything that were still outstanding questions. So we we have submitted into the record a landscape plan for the development parcel, but we do not have detailed plans for the conservation parcel on anything. So that is just known. There's a number of questions that came up over the course of the hearing in regard that are sort of construction-related, both in terms of vehicle access, in terms of parking of construction vehicles, hours of operation, police, and flaggers, things along those. The status of the no heavy trucking notice on Lake Street, and several other things. So we'll, I think the board will have to discuss those when we go into deliberation as to how we want to include addressing those issues that were raised by the public. At the previous hearing, there was a specific question that was raised. There's a waiver request from the town signed by law. And so the the board was considering additional approval on it. So this is when you're number 21. So the waiver, we were going to allow the applicant, what the applicant requested, one ground sign and a canopy sign, and the canopy sign was going to be limited to the size of the face that proposed canopy. So that was very straightforward. I was not sure, and I don't know if Ms. Kiefer can address this. Is there a specific size for the ground sign that you would, you're looking for?
Yes, we had talked about that. I may have Art weigh in. Can't find my notes. I think it was six feet by four feet. Am I for the size of it, am I correct, Art, or for the monument sign?
You had more idea of that than I did.
I think we decided that 24, 25 feet square, square feet was, would be an adequate size.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to be clear, though, because it hasn't been designed, that would be like the face of the sign, so it may be that it's a little bit off the, yeah, so it's not the height of it. Okay, thank you.
No, it's just the sign face.
Correct.
And then the other question, so that the, the current bylaw allows directional signs that are one square foot, which is, we had discussed last time, seemed a little bit small for the kinds of messages that would be required. And I know we had, we had discussed possibly making that a foot and a half, or making that two square feet. I don't know if you had a specific.
I would suggest two square feet. That it just allows for appropriate, making certain that it's wide enough and long enough, you know, to get that in. And because there's a senior population being served, I'm not certain if on, may even be a little bit enlarged, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
This is Pat again. On E16, which is on page 37 of the consolidated drafts, there's a limitation on the hours of operation, or the hours of construction activities between eight and six Monday through Friday, and between the hours of nine and five on Saturdays, Sundays are legal holidays. And I wanted to, it did seem odd to be contemplating in a residential area construction on the weekend and legal holidays, and I was wondering where that came from and the degree to which it's really necessary to do that, particularly with all of the testimony that we have received about how quiet this neighborhood is on Saturdays and Sundays and the sports activities that go on in the street. The notion that, that the construction is going to be taking place on the weekend seemed noteworthy to me, and I was wondering if the applicant could compliment, could comment on how important that was to them.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. I think that I will give you an introductory, and then I will allow Art to come in. In terms of continuity of construction, we think that allowing the Monday through Friday and then the weekend, it's going to overall shorten the timeframe for the construction to advance. And I know that the the town's bylaw have it eight to six Monday through Friday, and then with the weekend hours. But I'm not certain that there's been any restrictions that have been imposed for other residential projects. I know that this is a larger residential project, but you know, it doesn't seem to be the case that there should, there should be an exception, especially when the, the timeframe could be condensed for the overall construction period. And, and I hear your concern that it's a residential neighborhood. But it also, I think, addresses some of the, if one has a six-day, say, construction period per week, it's going to enable kind of a continuity of work, but also if there were concerns about traffic flows on Lake Street on the weekdays, allowing, again, a longer work week for the construction aspect of it, it will reduce the amount of time that that's happening on, on Lake Street. So with that said, Art or Gwen, if you want to weigh in, in terms of.
Well, I think the, the one that's most onerous, I think, to our future contractor, we hope will be our future contractor, will be the eight o'clock start. I think these, you know, the workers love to start at 7:30, and no noise before that. We've had that, that limitation in Newton, that we've started 7:30, but no noise until that time. And then they, they like to leave, you know, the job at four or something like that, and be able to get home and be with their family. And I'm sure we can do eight as a startup. Obviously, in the winter, working until six gets dangerous, so that's an issue. I think that the the weekends, maybe we could adjust the time a little bit. I'm not sure nine to five is totally necessary, and maybe Sunday is not necessary. But I think is, you know, Stephanie's saying something that's right on track, and I would just agree with, that we're, it's all in our best interest to get in and out as quickly as possible. And it's one of the arguments in favor of modular construction, which we hope will prevail. So I'm not sure how we leave this. Do we need to commit to something tonight, or do we have a little bit of leeway to to talk about that a bit more? And to work it out with the building department.
Well, our, it's a little hard to know, that when we close the hearing, whatever you, my understanding is that we have to put stoppers in our ears, and we are not capable of taking in any new information. So when, so anything that you have to say between that we can take into consideration has to be given to us before the hearing closes.
So the hours that are stated here under E16, this is taken straight from Title V of the Arlington Town Bylaws.
Correct, Mr. Chairman, and I, what Art has just suggested, it would, it would have to be, by way of this hearing, is a verbal request for a waiver to move the start time at 8:00 AM to move it slightly earlier. I don't know if you'll accept a verbal request for a waiver on that. But I think to the point that you're, and I'll submit that we will ask for a waiver of that, if you'll accept a verbal waiver to perhaps shift that eight-hour timeframe from a 7:30 to 5:30. Just for the board's consideration, I think that, one, as Art suggested, it works with kind of typical construction protocols, but then secondly, as, just as I stated before, in terms of it, if there's an ability to like, kind of shift the construction traffic to further off-peak, that might be helpful to the neighborhood, as well as, you know, kind of the typical construction schedule. But then to your first point, again, the, the request for the intent for the construction work to continue on the weekend, as Art just suggested, if the board's very concerned, it may be able to be limited to one day, but one day of the weekend. But just overall, it helps reduce the construction window, and that's a benefit, I think, both to the, the neighborhood, as well as the, you know, the continuity for the workers on site to advance, advance the construction in a timely process without a lot of breaks.
So if we did 7:30 to 5:30 and then gave up on, on Sundays, I think that would be acceptable. We prefer seven, if, if there's any flexibility, with no noise before then. That's really what we had in Newton, I guess, Gwen's reminding me.
Mr. Chairman, I, this is Pat again. I would like to, I mean, we have a, we have a little bit of time. I'd sort of like to hear a little bit from the public as to what they think about this issue. Obviously, they have potential interests in a whole range of different solutions, and you know, there are other questions about having construction activities during school, kids are coming to school, and it's, it's not, it's not such an easy choice, and but I'd like, before we close the hearing, to get a little bit more information about what might be feasible.
I think we should remember, I understand that, and I'm happy to take that into consideration. Do remember that a six o'clock stop, well, in the winter, will probably be very dangerous, and that would not be, it would really cut the workday if it was eight to sunset, and the winter is four, four something, four fifteen, four ten or something. So you'd really have a a schedule from eight to four of actual work time, and that's, that's fairly truncated.
And then the other thing to take into account is that those early morning hours, that's also the time when people were starting to take their kids to school, which is a large pedestrian activity in this area as well. And so I think we want to be cognizant of, you know, trying to avoid bringing, you know, heavy vehicular traffic into the neighborhood while people are trying to navigate the neighborhood on their way to the Hardy School.
Something that we're familiar with is, is a regulation where vehicles can arrive before seven, but no, no noisy activity would happen until, you know, seven, and that would be earlier than most school trips would be there. So there's, there would be, there could be an advantage to moving the construction activity earlier.
Even earlier. And I do think, this is a tough one. I do think that you know, if there is any danger to kids, we're going to have police there, we're going to have a lot of supervisions to make sure that none of those, whatever vehicles might be present, would be a danger to children or, or parents.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, while we're speaking of kind of construction and traffic within the neighborhood, just, I forgot to mention this at the beginning of the hearing, but from VAI, Scott Thornton is here this evening. He was not able to make the last two hearings, unfortunately. And he had submitted a memo earlier today that I believe has been circulated to the board, but so unfortunately, Mr. Thornton is in big demand, and he has another hearing at 8:30 this evening. So if they're, perhaps relative to this issue of moving, what we had proposed is that we would have a pre-construction meeting and to discuss, you know, the traffic and the safety protocols that we put in place, and please, and please detail along the route. If there's any specific questions from Mr. Thornton on that, as well as the memo that was submitted relative to just overall traffic from the project, we may want to address that prior to 8:30.
Thank you. Mr. Hanlon, you've been looking a little bit into some of the, the questions about the, the traffic generation. Have specific questions for Mr. Thornton?
Let me just the traffic generation figures are, just sort of back up for a second. The, my understanding is, and I wanted to get confirmation whether this was right, is that the method of analysis is basically starts with looking at, looking at background conditions, and that the, as the decision reflects, that was done fairly early on, and is not, it's not affected by which particular proposal you have. And that resulted in an estimation on backgrounds that was adjusted seasonally, and it was adjusted for the pandemic in accordance with an agreement between the applicant and, I believe, our Transportation Advisory Committee using state recommended guidelines. Is, is all of that accurate?
For the record, Scott Thornton with VAI. Through you, Mr. Chair, we actually worked the, we worked out that process with Beta, and Beta had indicated which which study area or which intersection should be incorporated into the study area. And then we worked out some adjustment factors with Beta to create a baseline condit- create a baseline condition. And then from that point, we generated future conditions, the background development that that had been identified to create the 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 future no build condition. And at that point, we then added the development or the the project traffic increases to those background traffic conditions.
And as I remember, the the conclusion last when it was still cold out or was that generally, when you looked at most of these intersections, the impact of the project that existed that was proposed then existed, but it was comparatively small because the traffic generation from that project was relatively small compared to the overall background flow and the future conditions. Is that right?
Yeah, that's that's generally correct. We had in in terms of the the project traffic increases, we were anticipating a certain amount of trips to be made using alternative transportation, which brought down the overall vehicle trip increases to the study area intersections to down to a lower degree. So so for instance, at some of the intersections, at the signalized intersections at either end of Lake Street, we had very low delay increases due to larger project. And then as the as the development changed, those increases got even smaller.
So as the as I understand it, with the way in which you go about generating an estimate of trips is you start with the with the the equations, basically, that are published by the Institute of Traffic Engineers, and you adjust that to the size of the project. And that is without any consideration of mode split, that is to say, people using things other than cars. And that gives you a number which then can be adjusted on the basis of some information or other to account for non-automobile automobile traffic. And if you just I think it's it's clear Beta agrees, and you all agree that some adjustment needs to be made needed to be made in the previous project because because it was clear that it was a transit transit related thing, and they were looking, you were looking at ways of doing it. And you had a number of different ways, one of which was using the census data for mode split that was characteristic of the census tract in which the project is is to be located. Am I right so far?
That's correct, yeah.
And as I recall, last April, you were using a deduction of about fifty five percent. And that that was, that is not what you're doing using now, the the reduction, the mode split that you would start with is forty six percent. And then for the for for the senior, that will apply to the duplexes, and for the senior housing, you're using half that. So it's twenty three percent. Still right? So the amount of adjustment for the senior listing is is much smaller than it was last last fall. That reflects lots of considerations of that this that this population might be less less using transit less than the average people, the average commuters in the in the census tract. At that point, the effect of the mode split adjustment has now been considerably reduced compared to what you were previously previously working with, right so far?
Yes.
And so Beta has disagreed in principle with whether or not you should use this or whether or not the adjustment, any particular adjustment can be generated by the data. But at this point, the effect of the adjustment has gotten down to be pretty small. And there are other reasons to expect that the the basic IT generate traffic generation that you're using is conservative because of the of the land use category that that you used. And I wonder if you could explain that?
Sure. So 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 we still think that some type of load split adjustment is applicable to the to the senior housing development. And we have, as you indicated, we have, we have reduced that down to to a smaller percentage of non non-automobile trip making. In terms of the the land use code that was used to generate trips for the senior housing development, we had used a code called appropriately, well, senior housing deep attached develop land use code. And that assumes a certain level of independence for the residents and and it and there's another code that's called Congregate Care Facility. And Beta had indicated in their review that the site may function, given the attributes and the discussion that we had regarding items such as the the services that are being provided and the expected age of the of the residents, that the use of of a land use code such as two fifty three for Congregate Care Facility may be more appropriate. We we still use the land use code two fifty two to provide a conservative analysis. But the the land use code two fifty three, the Congregate Care Facility results, comparing that with the senior housing category results in about a forty seven percent reduction in the in the daily traffic that would be expected at the site. And IT notes that there are some features that are present with Congregate Care Facilities such as transportation service, such as some some meals, sort of some types of features that are proposed with this development. And this development doesn't cleanly fit into either category. It sort of has a has a blend of both. But but if if we were to use the if we were to use the Congregate Care Facility, the the traffic generation would be even lower. And I think that you know, there's there's some arguments to be made for it, but I think that the, you know, the combination of the jitney service, the scheduling of the of the of staff shift times around peak hours, the scheduling of the delivery service outside of peak hours, the transit package and and some of the other TDM measures that are proposed for the project may bring, may in fact bring the the traffic generation profile of the of the project more in line with the Congregate Care Facility. So I I don't know. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Let me just, it it also is true that the applicant has, on a number of occasions, said that they were expecting an older population to to be resident in this facility than would be resident in the senior housing attached that 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 you used for it. That would make a big difference in terms of, potentially make a big difference in terms of whether or not what the peak hour generation is, because a younger population is more likely to will have a larger proportion of people still working and still commuting, and other people would be adjusting their schedules as as older people sometimes do to avoid going during during rush hour. I guess one question I have is is we know that this is limited to sixty five, sixty two plus. And and I think that the the land use category, two twenty one is is limited to fifty five plus. But I don't really completely understand why it is that we expect this this population to, other than that the minimum age is sixty two, why it is we're expecting it to be in the seventies in their seventies and eighties and and what the overall impact of this is. It will be open, I understand, as I understand it, to anybody who wants to live there who's at least sixty two.
Yeah, and I'll I'll let Gwen and Art respond to that.
I can say something through the speaker to to the committee. We have been in conversation with a likely, a very likely manager operations for the for the project. And it is, he's very familiar with the area, his his company is managing several other communities. And it is his judgment that where the need is in this particular area and and just the the overall situation of of similar facilities, that the need is for people in their seventies and eighties. And that's that's just a professional making a judgment out of his experience.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just add to that a little bit, and I think we might ask Bob Engler, who actually is we've designed several of these facilities and owned a couple. And I do think one of the reasons, which is a little bit sad, that they push it down to sixty two is you have, you know, eighty two year old men living whose wives want to come with them in this kind of facility, and they're younger, significantly younger. So that's a factor. But I wonder, Bob, if you want to say anything from your experience, because you've had a lot, right? Is Bob Engler on?
He was. Mr. Chairman, this is, I mean, I don't want to to go too far into this. I think that the answer we have so far is 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 pretty much all I I wanted at this point. And I wondered if I could go back to Mr. Mr. Thornton for a minute.
Please.
So, Mr. Thornton, the in looking at the burden on the surrounding area, the primary effect on the transportation system, it's the usual practice, isn't it, to examine traffic trips generated during the peak hour for the adjacent roadways?
Yes.
And as we sort of started with, that traffic is already very high, and it's going to get high even more in the in the future. So that, if I understand it right, the discussions that we're having about the mode split, the size of the mode split, the conservatism of the land use thing are all dealing, are all generating, are all within a sufficiently narrow boundary that none of them would affect the basic, the basic conclusion that the that the effect on the background traffic in this area is going to be comparatively small. Is that right?
Yes, yes, I would agree with that. But you know, the 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 peak hour traffic increases using, again, using this this higher land use code are, you know, in the range of, you know, by direction between eight and sixteen trips per hour. So that's, you know, that that's a that's a small, small increase over the course of the hour. And with the with the with the TDM measures that I mentioned, that those trips may not even get to that level. They may be spread or shifted outside of those peak hours.
Now, the analysis also gives rise, though, to daily trips, which I recall the current estimate is four hundred and twelve between the townhouses and the senior living facilities, and that's for the weekday, right?
Yes.
And there's also, it's a little bit less, isn't it, for Saturdays and Sundays?
It's definitely less for Sundays. I I don't have the Saturday number offhand or off the top of my head, but yeah, that's so that's four hundred and twelve daily trips on the weekday. So that's the total of of two-way trips. So so it would be two hundred and six entering, two hundred and six exiting over the course of a twenty four hour period.
And so just, do you have any idea what the traffic, what the existing development in this neighborhood would generate? Is that is four hundred and twelve a lot in a day compared to what is already there, or a little or in between?
I I think it's, I think we had done a a rough check, looking, just looking at a Google aerial, and you know, there seemed to be over I forget how many units, but but I would say it's probably in that in that area. But but we haven't, we haven't checked that.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I've I will eventually have a question from Mr. DeRuyter, who I think has done some work on that on that particular issue, but it may be a good a good time to to move on, and I and I can circle back to that.
Okay. Um. Were there other topics from the board? I know one one topic that has been coming up in the the emails that the board has been receiving in the last forty eight hours is the the question of the final disposition of the the conservation parcel. So the portion of the existing site that is beyond the portion that will be developed. And in the original application for the comprehensive permit and then several subsequent, excuse me, documents, it has been stated that the the intent for that was to have that property become that parcel become the property of the town. And subsequently, there was discussion about it becoming the property of a third party who would take over the property. And I just wanted to ask of the applicant, my understanding now is that the intent is for the for the current owner to maintain ownership over the over the conservation parcel. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. The the owners proposing to retain that but to put a an open space or conservation restriction on it. So it 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 the holder of that, though, could be a nonprofit of the restriction. If you if you've ever seen a how a conservation restriction is written, there's a grantor and a grantee. So they so Arlington Land Realty would continue to be the land owner, but they would grant, you know, basically give up the development rights on the conservation parcel.
And is there a background to the the change in direction from the applicant on this?
The I I think it was just the the owner was looking at the options and determined that it would just make more sense to keep it within its ownership and then to give up a conservation restriction. And, you know, normally, this that's the more common approach in my experience in forty B's when there is a a restriction involved, it's usually just a CR or a conservation restriction is placed on the the open space parcel as opposed to an outright grant with a third party.
Are there any substantive differences between the the two approaches?
Well, I I mean, one substantive difference is that, you know, who owns it? Who owns the land outright, obviously? But in in terms of whether it was held by a third party that couldn't develop it, or whether it's the development rights are are held by a third party, they're very similar in that regard.
And is is maintenance of the property, does that follow the owner? Does that follow the the grantor?
So a lot of that spelled out within the conservation restriction as to in in large part, the state has a general form that they that they require. And it provides activities that are prohibited and then activities that are permitted. And I I think that the parties can basically negotiate between themselves.
And is there a party at the moment that the the applicant is considering for working with for the conservation restriction?
Yes, there have been ongoing discussions with with a third party that is pretty much a conservation minded sort of entity.
And then there was another which item in I believe you were interested in discussing, which is number waiver request number six, regulations upon use private property. It's a bond to secure corrections of flooding conditions. This section requires an applicant to post a bond where a structure in excess of six thousand square feet in areas proposed within two hundred yards of any existing stream or wetland to post a bond sufficient, in the opinion of the commission, to secure performance of measures necessary to correct any flooding conditions resulting from the construction. And the applicant requested a waiver from this provision. The board had requested of of the Conservation Commission and of Beta Group to discuss the possibility of a bond, what value that bond should be issued in, and the the recommended value was one hundred and seventy three thousand nine hundred dollars. And I would ask Ms. Nova, if she could just explain with a background on generating that number.
Sure. So 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 what we did, Beta's landscape architect took a look at the areas that would need to be restored and improved and enhanced and applied a certain density for for the vegetation that was planted and also some of the earthworks that would be involved in that, and calculated the estimated cost of of that work.
And is that on the development parcel, or is that over the entire twelve acres?
That is the that was, we we did the cost estimate for the work, the landscaping work associated with the actual development parcel, and then the which included the ordering land subject to flooding, the compensation area. So the development parcel.
Okay.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Um, could you pull that up? Because I my recollection was that it also included the open space parcel.
Let me.
As I seem to recall, Beta had identified four areas within that memo.
Try to locate that.
Section that was behind the the development parcel.
This one is just the waiver.
Mister Chairman, this is Susan Chapnick, Chair of the Conservation Commission. Could could I respond while you're looking for that? Because I I assisted Beta in this evaluation.
You don't recall the the name of the file off the top of your head, do you?
Yeah, I do. It's Beta Memo Bond Estimate Memorandum, Thorne Dyke Place, twenty September twenty one.
Okay.
And then there's two, there's two, there's a bond estimate memorandum and a bond estimate attachment. And the memorandum specifically says that includes the following areas. Number one, bio retention rain garden area. Number two, compensatory storage area and woodland restoration area inside the project limits. So it does not include the conservation restriction area.
Okay.
I I'd like to just point out that the cost of doing this would be inside the construction contract from the contractor who's building the building and and doing the site. So I don't think this is a big issue. I'm not even sure a bond is appropriate. But it's fine. But it would be happy to guarantee that that work would be done. But as I say, it would be, I would think appropriately, something that the building department would review and make sure that it was the contract documents. And then the contractor, the site contractor, would be responsible for doing this work as part of the construction of the development parcel. And so that would happen, as I understand it.
And Mister Chairman, just for reference, relative to the the proposed bond, for the eleven sixty five R, the bond that was requested was only thirty thousand dollars. That project did involve relocation of a stream in the in the project. And also, I've I've taken a look, as as Mister Flipfell said, we're not necessarily opposed to a bond, but I just question the amount of the bond that's that's presented here relative to kind of the track record that the Conservation Commission has imposed for other residential projects. As you're aware, under forty B, you know, they're not to be special sort of application of regulations that aren't normally imposed on other residential projects. We're happy to to agree to a limited amount of a bond, but would just ask the board to consider the fact that a project that was just approved by them saw only a thirty thousand dollar bond. And as Mister Flipfell stated, we are committed to doing the work, but we just want to make
Mister Chair, this Martin Nova and Beta Group, the the difference between the two projects, the eleven sixty five asset and this one is that the the area is much larger on this project than it is on the eleven sixty five on the square footage that would, if in fact it needed to if it if it failed or a portion of it was failed, it's a much larger area.
Ms. Nova, if you could explain the difference between the the estimate and the adjusted estimate.
So the so the adjusted estimate is the assumption that there would be some survival in those areas and that the the entire area wouldn't require, you know, a complete replanting.
Any questions from the board on this question?
Chairman.
Just please, Mr. Hanlon.
I wonder if Ms. Kiefer has, we see the specific numbers here, and I wonder if Ms. Kiefer or clients have any specific objections to the estimates. In other words, what we're trying to do here is to have a bond that is sufficient to do the to do the work if it is, if if it isn't done. If it it's kind of an insurance sort of thing or a guarantee. And so the question, the first question is whether or not you've got reasonable estimates here for the cost of doing the work if there's a failure. And I wonder if there's any specific objection the applicant has to the calculations that Beta has made.
I I don't think so. I think I think the the number is okay. I'm wondering, I mean, since that number will be baked into the construction contract, is there so it's kind of double payment in a way, because you have a bond and you've also contracted as as a developer with the with the construction contractor to do the work for maybe that same price, if everybody's, you know, if the estimates are right. So I wonder, you know, what would sort of make sense is that that we are required in our construction contract to show the building commission, the building department, that we intend to do that work according to some standard that could be written by by anybody, by somebody that was qualified. And that that's baked into the construction contract, and that's, you know, it's another way to spend the one hundred and seventy three thousand, whatever it was, it's part of the construction contract, because I just know that's how it will actually flow here. You're going to have your contractor do that work, and we have no problem with that. It's all work that should be done.
Mister Chairman.
Mister Hanlon.
This is actually from Ms. Nova, but as I, as I understand it, we're not talking about somebody spending one hundred and seventy three thousand nine hundred dollars to for a bond, you're you're you'll pay a premium like you do for an insurance company, and the the company that that provides the bond will have obligated itself, therefore, to step in if there's been a default. And the default could be by the applicant here, or the default could be by the construction company that uses, and ultimately, ultimately, though, in order for the bond to be called on, it's my understanding that the that there has to be a default into people who are primarily responsible for for doing this work. So you'll only actually have to call on the bond if a number of failures take place. Ms. Nova, is that basically how it works?
The that's my understanding of how a bond works. Yes.
And do you have any idea what the premium would be on one hundred and seventy three thousand dollars under the circumstances?
I don't, I don't. Bill McGrath is going to be joining later by nine o'clock would have, would would know the answer to that question.
Okay, so just just from my point of view, Mister Chairman, I mean, I I get it that the construction company is going to be on the hook to the applicant, and the applicant is going to be on the hook to to the town. Behind all of that, there's this huge insurance company that is so solvent that you can be sure that they'll be there to do the work. And you're just dealing with increments of of assurance that the work will actually be done in the way that they, in the way that's that's been contemplated. If there's not something really wrong with the numbers, I think the board is just going to have to deal in deliberations with the concept.
I I think we can let go of that. It's it's the only bad one thing about that is is bonds that are the cost of bonds is a function of risk. And some bonds are cash bonds, where you actually have to put up the the number in cash. Then the bondholder decides, you know, whether to allocate that or not. I I think if you had a good contractor, maybe the contractor could you know, have that bond priced down to a number that was quite affordable, and I can see how maybe that would be useful. You know, for the for the city to know that that work was going to be done, so for the town, I'm sorry. Anyhow, let's, I I think we get down to
Um, so having already gone through the speaking with the board asking for additional comments, are there any additional questions in regards to the draft decision? Mister Mills?
Yeah, I just have one question. I don't believe we've covered really the street traffic from the construction site. You know, I can see dozens of workers' vehicles, contractors' vehicles, heavy equipment, the trucks delivering the prefabs. Do we have any assurance the street is going to remain clear, and people are going to be able to get in and out of their driveway? Is that a condition we should be adding?
Um, I would ask that question of the of the applicant, is have you made, have you considered up to this point where you know, where the the workers who are working on their construction, where they will be parking during the day?
I think my take on that anyhow, and Stephanie step in or Gwen or anyone, maybe Scott. You know, Scott, if you're still on, I know you had to leave.
You need time after.
But anyhow, there would be a plan that would be worked out with the building department as to how all that is handled, you know, where you park or don't park and police details and I I don't think that even if we tried to do something that wasn't acceptable, we'd be, I mean, it isn't so much we, it's the contractor would be bound by by certain things that would be in the construction plan, you know, a plan of how the building gets built, and it would be monitored by the building department and their inspectors. And I I think that's something that needs to be worked out on a you know, street by street basis and day by day basis and hour by hour basis, and there'll be a lot of detail.
Just to interject, page thirty seven, item E sixteen states clearly, parking of all vehicles is to be on the property. Thank you.
That makes sense.
Correct. It it's, it is a a normal practice prior to any construction for the contractor to provide a detailed construction management plan and to go through that in very, you know, month by month, week by week, with the with the building department in the in the town, and that would include, you know, the when and how the police details would be and and so on and so forth. So that's there to be worked out.
Whatever rules are laid down, that would be, you know, be on the contractor to abide by those, and we would care about that as a developer, and obviously, the building department would as well, representing the city. Good time.
And to the chairman.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Pardon me. I I was just saying, through the chairman, if I may also just chime in in response to Mister Mills' question. As as Gwen, I think, was the one that had stated that there will be a a preconstruction meeting, there will be the details of the the flaggers that are going to be out there, the police detail, the the timing of if there is a need for road closures, that will all be established, and that's generally through a condition that it's a kind of a construction traffic or construction mitigation sort of meeting is how that those details are ironed out. And at this point, it's typically a little premature to iron those out. You really need, once you have you know, your contractor on board, and then they work through it. But to also kind of further respond, just for clarification, we know that while there's construction going on, we're not going to be, we're not going to have an increase in traffic from the residents because the project won't yet be built. So it's, you know, one type of traffic issue that's separate and apart from the traffic generated from the project. And again, that's handled typically through a a preconstruction meeting with the contractor and and working out the details. So we expect that that to be a a condition that the board would impose with the decision.
Okay. Mills, does that address your question?
Well, I do know that inspectional services really doesn't have any bearing on the parking situation, et cetera. And I do believe we should have some guarantees for the locals. We have a huge construction project occurring on some very narrow streets in immediate proximity to homes and driveways, and I just think we should put some conditions in there that those driveways should never be blocked, and these people should have a hundred percent access to their homes. That's all.
Okay.
What are there with you?
I'd just like to add that that they there, the portion of the property that is going, is planned to be open lawn area is going to be available for parking onsite from the beginning, and and that's, it'll be free from any building construction.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Mills. Anything further from the board? None. Are there, were there any anything in the draft decision that the applicant wanted to raise?
Uh, yes, Mister Chairman.
Please.
I'm scrolling through my version as well. I will, I will, I will focus primarily on the condition section. So. So can I find which page that starts on?
Starts on twenty three.
Thank you. Give me one moment, I apologize. Within condition, it's it begins, I believe, on page twenty nine, so it's. Let me see the first. It goes up a while. And so it's C one, and then if you go down, it is C one I or E I, pardon me, right, you scroll up a little bit.
The. All right, okay.
And within subpart two, there was a three-year vegetation monitoring schedule with a ninety five percent survival rate. And then again, in subpart six, it speaks to survival rate of the plantings less than one hundred percent. And then in section, subpart seven, it goes back and talks about plant survivorship less than ninety five percent, the third year report. I I believe that the commission, in discussions with with Beta even had in their memo of October fourteenth, had referenced the survival rate at eighty percent. And so I believe that all three of those to be consistent with the commission, the joint Beta Commission memo, would be an eighty percent survival rate.
I believe that's correct, Ms. Nova, was eighty percent the the final figure we had settled on?
You know, Mr. Chair, I I don't recall, you know, I think Susan would be able to answer that question.
Ms. Chapman?
If I may, Mr. Chair. Yes, the unfortunately, the the letter that Beta and the Arlington Conservation Commission submitted for the record to the ZBA, which is is in the record and and on the website, it came one day after this draft. So our letter came on October fourteenth and your draft is October thirteenth. So many of the edits that we recommended and additions that we recommended did not get into this draft. That's one of them. The reason we changed it to eighty percent, and actually, we also added some more specific requirements, very specific what should be in the plans. We made that clearer. But the reason we changed it to eighty percent is in understanding the environment generally and in inconsistency with what we defined for one one six five R M S F forty B vegetation replacement plan. So we wanted to be consistent with that plan. And when you have time, Mr. Chairman, I would like to just point out a few of the key differences between this October thirteenth draft and what Beta and ACC recommends.
So put a note to come back to that.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just to pick up on that, I know you're going to get back to it. But within the combined Beta ACC memo of ten fourteen, they speak to on a mitigation plan for flood storage. And they have subparts A through E as opposed to what's here is one through eight. And I I think that the applicant would would is fine with the proposal that the ACC Beta of their ten fourteen. So it would be our recommendation that the board replace what is on page three of the Beta ACC memo with subparts one through eight of the draft decision. If that makes sense to you.
It does.
Okay, okay. And then moving on from there, I think my next specific comment gets into C, the last sections of subpart C or maybe C two, actually. Right, C two. And then under L, the I I it seems like there's two different concepts that are going on in paragraph L.
Definitely does.
Yeah, so I don't know if the board meant to make that, what's the second sentence should actually be the M or not. And this gets into somewhat of a larger issue in terms of the the setting aside of a hundred thousand dollars in escrow towards solid waste removal slash invasive species management. And and I believe that there's other parts that the the board has kind of taken concepts of what the applicant had proposed in the MOU and then blended it into the decision that have worked out a little bit better, if you will. And I think that the intent here is that the board is trying, or the the draft presented to the board is is trying to put that concept out there. And so if we can just footnote that for one moment and then move on to subpart M, where it says that as a condition that the applicant and the town sign a mutually agreeable memorandum of understanding regarding the disposition of conservation parcel. I believe that that would not be permitted under, would be to make that a condition because it would be a a condition subsequent and the applicant doesn't have control if the town of Arlington refuses to enter into a mutually agreeable. So and that's that would be a local permit or a local approval of some sort. And I I think that that's problematic to impose that as a condition. That being said, I'm sorry, go ahead.
As I say, with the with the intention of the board and is that we would include as a condition that in the absence of an of a signed memorandum of understanding that the that the following conditions would would hold, but that if if the town and the applicant reached a separate memorandum of understanding, that would take precedence over the these sections.
Yeah, that is exactly where I was going, Mr. Chairman. That to impose a requirement of an MOU, I think, exceed supports authority. But I don't want to undercut our commitment to try to work with the town towards that. But the way that and I, as I referenced it, it was stated for another aspect of it. It was in the absence of the applicant with the town meeting an agreement, the board would impose. And so that would be for, that would apply to that L one or whatever you want to call that. Extra one there, correct. And then in M, it, the second sentence of that says the applicant has agreed to the terms outlined in finding seventy one above. I think the numbering is off, but I also think that that's not entirely relevant or or maybe appropriate even. I I think if you're looking for what the board intended, it would be seventy three and not seventy one. I think it's a numbering sort of issue.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah. Um, and I would just suggest that it's as correct as a finding that the applicants proposed at a portion, you know, approximately twelve acres be put under a conservation restriction. But then it, there's a little bit more, you know, opinion from the town, that the towns expressed a significant concern and so forth. So I don't want the applicant to be signing on to, you know, the first part is factual, the second part is what what the board is holding in its opinion. So in terms of putting that forth in a condition, that sentence should be stricken, in our opinion.
Or Mr. Chairman, it could be a separate condition.
Certainly.
A separate finding.
Or a separate finding, yeah.
Or just before the Ds. But you had recommended to swap, swap the locate the position of D and E, which makes sense.
Right, right, exactly. And then again, in subpart F there, that's what you were talking about before, though, in the absence of a signed agreement between the and I think that that kind of phrasing might be better suited for the hundred thousand, so.
Absolutely.
And but also there within F, the applicant has it it it's as it's worded in the draft, it says it's prior, you have to go back to D one, it's it's prior to a certificate of occupancy for any structure in the project. And the the proposal that the applicant had put forth for that twenty five thousand dollar annual was upon the final. So actually, it would be under D two and not D one. The timing. And then when you move on to, it says, under E, our our comment previously that carried over in your draft was make section G. Or or I suppose that you may want to make it section C three, and we that's, there is no C three currently, so. It's project design and construction, so it kind of flows more with what the others see.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yep, so it's just a stylistic thing, not really a substantive. Then if you go to condition, proposed condition E ten, I it was E nine and E ten both, I think those both would be more subsumed with what the final plan should include. Under E thirteen, just a request for a clarification that it's onsite utilities and not all utilities. So utilities within the public way, but onsite utilities. Under F four, I would suggest that the the applicant, that the condition read, the applicant shall ensure that emergency vehicles can adequately maneuver through the site as required by the state fire code or in accordance with state fire code provisions. Under section E.
Mr. Chairman.
To Hanlon.
I wonder, I mean, on the previous suggestion, I wonder if Mr. Kiefer could could explain what it is that the additional language and substance changes.
I I I think that there's, as it's presently written, it's just unclear, what does that mean, can adequately maneuver? So if we have a baseline or a reference, that that just adds a little bit of clarity to it. That would be my suggestion.
See, okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, I think I brought up this question of access to fire vehicles before, and specifically, the very front of the building. It wasn't a roadway completely across it. And I was assured that the applicant was going to get the review of the Arlington Fire Department to make sure they were happy with that situation. And I dropped my objection. So I would like to still have the Arlington Fire Department be starting off on the design of this project and access to it.
And they absolutely will.
Thank you.
I I through the chairman, I I wasn't trying to infer that the Arlington Fire Department wouldn't be reviewing. Under section G, police, fire and emergency medical conditions, there's a there's a condition G two that's proposed. I I think perhaps for clarity's sake, just to have that read that it stairwells and garages are to be designed per state building code requirements.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
I'm sorry, but I just like to, right now, it reads the stairwells and garages must be minimum two hour fire rated. And then there's a comma. And then it says residential units must be minimum one hour fire rated or as required by the state building code. So the provision as required by the state building code applies to the residential units, but not the stairwells and garages. And my question is whether, in fact, the state building code does deal with the stairwells and garages, whether it exists to do that. And secondly, I'm I'm guessing that this language came from Mr. Haverty. What the reason is for having the state building code provision in the second clause, but not the first.
I actually think this language came as a result of comments from prior versions. I don't think that the state building code language was in the original draft. And I don't think that there's any reason why the state building code reference shouldn't apply to to both aspects of this.
Absolutely.
Condition. We should change it to state that. And I think the purpose of including the reference to the state building code was basically if somehow in the future, the requirements were actually changed to require something more strict that they would have to comply with the code irrespective of what's in the condition. But this would just provide more clarity.
Okay.
Under subpart H, it would be H five, I believe. Oh, no, I'm sorry, H six. For some reason, in H, my my version didn't print out numbers. Again, onsite utilities, we would request that changed, be adapted. And then the second sentence where it says the applicant shall request a grant of location, it's actually the utility companies, my understanding is that does that, so. Perhaps change it, applicant in conjunction with the utility companies would request a grant of location. Under H nine, I don't believe the board has the authority to acquire an easement to be given by the applicant. And then getting to the third sentence in that H nine, all sewer service. I think it should be clarified that it's all sewer service for the senior living residents should utilize agent sewer lines.
Yeah. I know the the residential units, I I know there was some discussion, but there was some memos in regards to the sizes of those required plumbing for that. The request for the larger sewer easement, I believe that came from the engineering division. I would just ask. I would just ask Kelly Lanema if she knows. Why that may have been requested.
All right, can you, this is for H nine?
For H nine, it was a request for a temporary wider sewer easement beyond the existing ten feet. During construction.
I do not know, I'm I'm going to refer back, if you give me a minute, I'm going to look back through the memorandum provided by Wayne Shinnard.
Okay.
Just to see if there's a specific rationale for that.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Well, Ms. Lanema looks that up, I I wonder. If we back away from whether or not the board has the power to require an easement, which is after all, a property interest, and that's complicated, and. Maybe all you really need is permission to do it and a license or something like that. But is is there actually an objection on the applicant's part to the substance of this, that you don't want to provide that wider. Area in which, in which the town can work to provide this stuff, or is this just a, is this. Is this just a legal thing, or is the thing have to do with what it is that you're, that you're willing to allow the town to do to do this work?
Well, well, I think in part, I don't know that we know what the town wants to do. So maybe Kelly can provide us with that answer in a moment, but I'm not certain what the purpose of it is, and. So if that could be clarified, that would be helpful.
So I'm I'm pretty sure, Mr. Chairman, that if we, if we knew, if we were in a, if we knew exactly what what this was about. In substance, it would be possible to figure out an appropriate way to write a condition that would not raise any difficulties under forty B.
No, certainly, and and the the ZB is is the the final note under H nine that I had added that. Zoning boards of appeal cannot grant easements, they have to be granted by the Board of Survey, which in the town of Arlington is the select board.
Mr. Chairman, it wouldn't be the zoning board granting the easement here, or or the the select board, I believe that this. Is requiring the applicants to provide an easement to the town to allow the construction to occur. On the applicant's property. And I guess I I'm going to echo Patrick's question. Which is, is there an actual objection to this, because if the easement isn't provided, I'm not sure that the. Sewer department has the ability to provide the service that the applicant is requesting.
I just want to concur with what council and council Haverty said, it's just an easement for construction. For the town to have access.
For chasing that down.
Yeah.
Is there any objection on the applicant's part to. Allowing access to additional land, if if we don't call it extending a temporary easement to allow the town to perform.
So perhaps not, and I may, if John is unmuted, ask him just to. And still not, because I thought that our, you talked about the fire hearing, that the sewer line that was associated with the project was actually. The one farther from the property line.
If I may, John Hessian, Mr. Chairman, they. You know, our understanding of public works request here, there's an existing. Sewer line within an easement on the Thorndike Place property that runs along the Dorothy Road. Frontage and and the property line, and I believe the easement is ten feet wide today. So that's in existing main. This project, we have been requested, as Stephanie just mentioned. We are not, our project is not connecting to that sewer line that's on the Thorndike Place property, we're connecting to. The sewer that's located in the middle of Dorothy Road, so. You know, again, I think our question is. The the sewer easement is overgrown today, there's vegetation there, we're going to have to clear it and and partially. Do some maintenance of that easement, and with the construction of the. You know, the duplex units and their driveways and front yards, you know, the sewer department, sewer division would will have. Much better access, the vegetation will be cleared. Again, it's it's a question of what construction is proposed there. And and to be honest, if, like we talked last meeting with the storm drain easement, if there are. Sewer improvements that need to be done on that line. The time to do it would be during coordinated with the construction of Thorndike Place. We wouldn't want to construct all the driveways to the duplexes, all their sewer, you know, and water connections out to the street. Their front lawns and landscaping, and then and then have to come back in and and disrupt all that with sewer line improvements, so. Again, ours is somewhat of a a lack of understanding of. What what the need is, and if there's improvements that need to be done, or is it just protecting for down the road if something. Does have to be done, and what would be the the reasonable, you know, size of that easement. For the sewer division to be able to do future work.
Well, it's it's definitely not protecting for something down the road, because it says it's a temporary during the period of construction.
Right, and that's, again, John Hessian, that's part of what is confusing. Yeah, we're not aware that the sewer division is doing any work for this project or any other project on the Thorndike Place property. You know, and if it, it it's not clear if it has, like, the last part of. That H nine, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall notify the Arlington Water and Sewer Division to conduct. A post-construction evaluation of the sewer main. If if this is a concern that the construction is going to. Negatively impact that existing sewer line. We've, we've provided a, and I think we drafted it a a condition, I'm not sure. Stephanie, if you remember what number it was, but that we would, you know. Perform a TV inspection of that that line, pre-construction. Notify, you know, the sewer division of any deficiencies in it, you know, pre-construction. Though, though any repairs on any existing deficiencies would be the responsibility of the town. And then we would TV it again, post-construction, and any damage that was done to it would be the responsibility of. You know, the applicant, but in essence, it would be the applicant's contractor, or their subcontractors that would have done the damage, but. So, again, not knowing what temporary, what what work they intend to do, that they need a temporary easement. It's it's really not in opposition to it from our perspective, but it's getting it right. What's needed, why is it needed, and let's make sure it's done, done right, and. You know, the right size easement, does it need to be twelve feet, or does it need to be fifteen feet? A little bit more clarification would. Would definitely help. Smooth this one out, I think.
If we were to. Sort of change it so that the the applicant would. Would, you know, in in conjunction with the engineering division. Discuss access to the easement and any possible, any expansion of space. During the period of construction, something along those lines, would that be?
I I think that we could agree to that, that that the applicant, you know, will agree to. Have discussions, or however you disgrace it, with the with engineering relative to. The the department's, you know, request for. Temporary, you know, access or or temporary widening of the existing sewer easement. During the construction period, as 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 John stated. It it, yes, if if there's plans that the town has to do work on that sewer line. It makes complete sense, so as not to have our project be built, and then the town comes say, oh, we were going to, you know. We need to rip this up to do repairs to the sewer line, so absolutely, coordination makes sense, it's just. There really has been nothing that's come forward in terms of, because the sewer line isn't part of our project, so.
Okay.
What what is the. What is the intent there? And then just to kind of provide the link for you, John had mentioned that we had proposed a CCTV, that we would. Would offer it as a condition, that's, you find that in proposed condition E six.
I remember coming across that earlier.
Right, and then I I guess also, just in terms of the the second part of H nine while we're still on there. And and I guess I would have John propose revisions, because the, I think from. From an engineering perspective, the the second sentence. John, I think you and I discussed some alternate language, my notes don't have that alternate language there.
Oh, the second, the applicant shall provide the Arlington Water and Sewer Division with upgrading sewer flow with peaking factor. Suitable capacity. Mr. Chairman, if you could scroll up, it might be H four. Maybe H three. So I think we were kind of thinking of mimicking the language in the second sentence in H two. The applicant shall provide the Arlington Water and Sewer Division with calculations to ensure the distribution system. For the area has the necessary capacity to meet, so H two is specific to water. And, you know, it's really the same kind of requirement for sewer.
So H two does say all water and sewer infrastructure.
Right, but then the second sentence.
Distribution system, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So instead of distribution system for water, it would be collection system for the sewer.
And again, and then again, on H nine, the last sentence. As as John had referenced, that CCTV condition that we had proposed, so that would be somewhat. Duplicate if it's already addressed in E six, the number was, I said. And then within section I for wetlands, floodplanted environmental conditions. Request for clarification under I two, that the applicant will be required to obtain in order of conditions under the Wetlands Protection Act. Within. Condition, proposed condition I nine. There's a reference there about the work should be conducted in accordance with the approved erosion and control and sedimentation. And then the the next sentence, that's underlying, I'm not certain why the underlining is there, I just assumed. It was just a formatting sort of tweak, the the twenty one days of final grading seems a bit tight. I would suggest twenty one days.
That, is that in the last line, that ten days?
It's in, no, it's in the second sentence, within one week.
I would just ask, is Nova, her opinion of that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm looking at a version, I believe it's the. One of the marked up version, and actually, the sentences underlined were struck. Just leaving the first sentence. So.
The applicant would be fine with that.
But, yeah, I know, so I don't know if it actually was, it was, it was, you know, suggested for striking. So it looks like it was kept in, so I guess the question is temporary set us stabilization measures approved by the board, we. Work be addressed for more than ten days, I think. You know, ten days is is a short period of time, and I, you know, twenty days would probably be. More realistic.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hamlin.
I just want to, there are two things I want to focus on, one is, is that at some point in some draft or other, this underlined had a note from Mr. Haverty saying, discuss with the board. So presumably, there's a question as to whether it should come out or not, which I don't know that we're able to deal with now. But the language that Ms. Kiefer is talking about is in the second sentence, as I understand it, we now say within one week of final grading. And she is proposing within twenty one days of final grading, and the question is. What would be betas or the conservation's. Committees' reaction to increasing that one week period to twenty one days, three weeks, basically.
Okay. Okay, so there was a wrong stint. I think within one week of final grading is 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 reasonable.
This is Susan Chapnic, Chair. Conservation, if I may weigh in, yeah, that's that's um, that's standard, we don't want. Erosion into resource areas, and if you let it, I mean, even a week, you know, you can get a storm. Or something happening, and then the disturbed area is, it the sediment just gets into the resource area, so. It's a reasonable request. And consistent with what we usually require.
Take all that under advisement.
If you could scroll down to proposed condition I twenty three.
Okay.
It presently states with application of standard salt within one hundred feet of resource areas is prohibited. We'd request that to be revised to within one hundred feet of BBW or IVW. Just a note of explanation there, the the walkway that's in front of, for instance, the bike storage area. That's within a hundred feet of DLSF, and. We would want to have that sanded, so, and then there's probably some other locations, so. I think the intent that provides a protection is that it's within a hundred feet of IVW, BBW.
I may respond to that, Chairman Klein.
Just going to ask for that.
Oh, okay, thank you. We did, we did make a recommendation to the ZBA. About this, we would like it to remain resource areas, but we do have an allowance for that area. That Ms. Kiefer is talking about, because we expect that that area would have. So so we we propose the following sentence, the foregoing does not apply to the clean snow removed from the emergency access road. You don't have to copy all this down, it's in our comment letter, but I'll just read it. From the emergency access road, as long as no sand or non-approved de-icing materials are used, and the snow is clear of all foreign. Debris, so we understand. Debris. So we understand that there are alternative de-icing materials. We we recommend. Uh, products such as magnesium chloride or something similar. Um, that that have been um, recommended in in different types of of manuals that you can find online, and we have a reference to that. So so we're acknowledging that that's that's impractical in that area, but we're saying you can't use the normal. But de-icing um, materials. Would that be a reasonable um, alternative? They do that in Cambridge. So we checked what they do in Cambridge.
I I I think my one kind of question of concern then would be, um, because you you impose a condition that you want it to be easily enforceable. Um, and so in terms of the, you know, the. The management staff that's going to be there out clearing these things to make it very clear to them where they can apply. Um, certain items. I I think that. Again, going back to my suggestion of just one hundred feet of IVW, BVW, um, is. It is a. A a clearer, but to make certain that there is compliance because those areas can be very easily identified. Um, otherwise, I I. I I guess I would ask, John, if you have any comments in terms of what um, is Chapnick's proposed. Proposed provision would be um, in terms of, I know that you know. You know, more readily which areas of the project might be in within one hundred feet of um, the LSF that um, might might. Propose challenges for compliance with the condition. As written.
Yeah, um, I I guess I understand the alternative de-icing materials, but. Um, one of the, one of the questions I had on this was. So under the local wetland bylaw, you know, the hundred foot buffer or aura is a resource area. So is is the intent of this is that? We would not be able to sand or salt. Within a hundred feet of the hundred foot buffer slash R. Or in other words, within two hundred feet of um, a a BVW or IVW.
No, it's just a one hundred foot. So the aura is is the. The aura is a hundred feet from the resource area and it is a resource in the town, as you said. That is equivalent to the hundred foot buffer area of the Wetlands Protection Act. It is not in addition to.
Right, but the way this is written is. No application of sand or salt within one hundred feet of a re- resource area. Um, so that would be the the R is a resource area. So that would say we wouldn't be able to use sand or salt within a hundred feet of the aura. Which is two hundred.
I see. So it needs to be clarified.
Yeah, and and that's why Stephanie was suggesting replacing resource area with BVW or IVW.
Right, or maybe within the a hundred feet of BVW, IVW, or within the aura would be.
Yeah.
Clarify it.
Yeah.
Um, and then we are allowing. For a practical exception for the emergency access road because that is the aura.
Yeah, yeah, I'm absolutely.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. Yes.
I think it it was just a little confusion on the definition of resource area. Okay, thank you.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Uh, and then if we could just scroll to I twenty seven.
Yep.
Uh, I don't think that the phrase, it says the applicant shall submit for review and administrative approval by the board, a restoration plan for the. For the proposed compensatory floodster flood storage areas of the site. Um, I think that perhaps we want to say a a planting plan because we're going to be creating. Those uh, compensatory flood storage areas. So. Um, I I guess in so, in in one extent, they're presently, they are vegetated, but we're going to be regrading it. So I think it's more a. A planting plan would be a more appropriate phrase there.
Um, we do have in section C, we have to make this consistent with section C. So section C did request a compensatory flood storage plan, did it not?
Yes, that's that's that's.
That's I twenty six, it's still there.
Excuse me?
So I twenty six references, the applicant shall provide compensatory flood storage as indicated in condition C one.
Oh, okay.
Go and then.
Oh, you're just clarifying that this is in reference to the planting plan versus the compensatory flood storage plan?
Yes, this is I twenty seven. Oops, sorry. Applicant shall submit for review and administrative approval by the board. And we had, it currently reads restoration plan for the proposed compensatory flood storage area and their. Quest is to clarify it to to read a planting plan for the proposed compensatory flood storage area because it, we're not restoring it. We're, it's being created new.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, moving on to proposed condition I twenty eight. Um. And and perhaps um, there can just be some explanation. Um, because as is presently written, the applicant shall submit for review and administrative approval by the board. Um, generally you see for um, for review for um, administrative approval. You know, inconsistency with this decision. Um, this seems to be and. I I'm not quite certain what that administrative approval. Like, what are the conditions? Like, could it just be withheld and withheld? Um, um, and maybe Mr. Haverty can weigh in with alternate language, but. If there's something to tie it in, you know. Consist, you know, administrative approval to review it and approve it as consistent with the requirements of the decision. Um, but I'm not certain that there's any. Specific parameters that it that it has in there for that invasive species management plan. So that would be my first comment on there. And then um, there's I have two comments on that one. Then. Um, in the middle of I twenty eight where it says um. Uh, for work within the aura. I would just um, clarify that to just say a hundred foot buffer.
The um, the invasive species management plan was recommended as a a condition um, requirement in C as an addition. So the Conservation Commission and Beta in their comment letter. Um, recommended adding that plan. So now you would have three plans in that section that reference wetlands. One would be the compensatory flood storage plan. One would be the planting or landscape, however you're calling it, planting plan. And the other would be the invasive species management plan. And it is, um, we recommend a definition there, what what should be included there. Um. I think that we've used the term aura consistently throughout. It is a resource area and in Arlington, I don't understand why we would change it to the hundred foot buffer in this in this instance. Especially in reference later to waivers where we're we're allowing a waiver in the aura for certain specific. Activities that that are going to be done consistent with the plan as proposed. So I think it might be confusing at this point and unnecessary to change the term here.
Uh, I'm fine with the second one. And then I don't know if um. Your counsel wanted to weigh in on my first point.
Have any?
Which one are we talking about?
So this is the use to the term um, review and administrative approval. And whether that. Grants the board essentially the ability to to drag its feet on things.
And and you've actually used that term in several conditions, so.
Right.
Right, and that and that is language that has been blessed by the Housing Appeals Committee. The the thing is, the 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 purpose of calling it administrative approval. Is that it doesn't start a new hearing process. It's not a. You know, there's no noticed hearing requirement. It's not an approval process that could be subjects to an appeal. It is simply a process where the board administratively reviews. Information that's being submitted post permit and. Ensuring that it's consistent with what was approved by the board. So I mean, if if there's a request to put some sort of. Timeframe for that review, I I I don't think that's unreasonable.
Mr. Chairman. Um, I think it would be helpful if. We could take a look at, I mean. Really, the, in my view at least, the proposal that is before us is what appears in the ACC Beta Letter of October fourteenth. And the paragraph that relates to this is at page four. Um, and I think that the applicant should be looking at that one because that's the actual language that. Uh, is most. Is most likely to be considered by the board. Um, and I want to give you a moment to do that, but it it, you know, essentially there's not much point in looking at what I twenty eight should say if. We already have the invasive species management plan, which has been a submission requirement. If that would actually, as far as I can tell, largely obviate the the provision of a plan. In I twenty eight, although provision of something that verifies that the plan has been carried out. Might be the appropriate thing to be in that. In that part, I leave that up to Ms. Chapnick. So this is on page four, the bullet that appears at the top of the page, right? So the invasive, the language that is in, that is proposed for section for part C. Uh, for the invasive species management plan is there, and I'm assuming they're not two, that this is the only one that we're actually thinking of requiring. You'll notice that it includes a reference to monitoring reports submitted to the ZBA. So there's an element of self enforcement here.
Um, also, I'll point out that we're not trying to make it onerous. And if you look up above. Um, because the planting plan requires certain monitoring as well, we say that. The reports can be combined because we assume the same. Entity that might be doing the planting might also be. Doing the invasive management and, you know, they could submit one report on the plant health as well as the invasive management of the area.
Uh, to the chairman, may I ask for a clarification on the monitoring reports then? Uh, with that statement, is that proposed um, annually for all of those, all of the monitoring reports in June?
Yes.
I would, uh, uh. Just as a, to clarify, then I would suggest that that be put in. Um, if the board adopts the Conservation Commission's proposed language for the management plan. Um, under the invasive species, I don't think there is a, I don't think it says in there um, on the basis, so annual.
You're right. Now, this section was just the plans. I I understand that the conditions say. They might reference the plans and then they might have some specific condition on that. Um, which is what I understand the difference being. It's our recommendation and Beta's recommendation that several of these be in perpetuity. Um, that would survive the the perm, the expiration of the permit. And that um, is consistent with what we did in one one six five R, may I say F forty B? Because these um. Restore these mitigation plantings, um, these these invasive control, et cetera. These are um, provisions that protect. The wetland resource areas on the site. And if we just say. Oh, they're just for three years, then what happens after that? So um, not that you have to submit monitoring monitoring reports for three years, but that it has to be. The the plans have to be followed. Um, in perpetuity. So that's a recommendation from Beta and the. Conservation Commission that the ZBA should consider. Um, adding. To these.
So the monitoring would be for three years, but what would? Start in year four?
Well, they, the the plan that they have in place has to keep happening. So the plans should have specific requirements for. How to remove invasives, um, what to look for, um, you know.
So the plan.
I'm not a wetland, you know, I I don't, I'm not, I'm not a uh, landscape person, so I don't know exactly what would be in there.
So that the plan that's instituted would continue, it just, there would not, no longer be a monitoring requirement.
Unless you want to have a monitoring requirement. Um, so so, for example, at Sims, which has a conservation restriction in that area, we still have a monitoring requirement and a reporting requirement. To the Conservation Commission. So you could request that. I mean, I leave that up to the board. But at a minimum, we'd like to see that the plans be implemented in perpetuity.
But those are a part of the conservation restriction, correct?
Um, yeah, I was just making an analogy. This this part that we're talking about is not on the conservation restriction land. This this, these conditions we're talking about. Are for the areas that are being disturbed and revegetated on the site. Including the compensatory flood storage area.
I I would ask if if John, if you've taken a look and have any um. Reaction to. Um, page four, the invasive species management plan proposed condition.
I'm taking a closer look at it. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, can you? Scroll to the the exact. Part that's in. Kind of in question.
There's the basis, it's not invasive species, it's the. Was it invasive?
It is.
It is the invasive species.
Oh.
There you go.
I guess, you know, I'm looking at that that bullet, um, you know, talks about an invasive species management plan. Uh, the second. So the second sentence. Kind of defines what's in the plan, the monitoring reports are. Kind of uh. Detailing any invasive species and recommendations for control and and removal. That's. That's really more of a um. Should be more. Either a confirmation of the next step in the plan or a recommendation for. Uh, a modification to the plan. Uh, for example, maybe the method of removal. That was proposed in the original plan. As part of a monitoring report, it shows that it wasn't effective. There may need to be a recommendation for an alternative. So that third sentence could be maybe be uh, clarified. So that third sentence could maybe, maybe be clarified a bit. And then the... And then the last two sentences are, I think, pretty straightforward, what would be included in a normal, you know, site visit monitoring report.
Kevin, does that, do you agree with that?
That's acceptable to me. I think that's reasonable, John.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I just, I mean, the, we've gone through some of these provisions. The other plans that are both referred to the immediately, immediately previously are things that if the applicant has not already taken a look at and provided us with all the information they have to provide, they may want to take an opportunity to do that before we close the hearing because the proposals that are before us really are, will include both the landscape plan and the, the compensatory flood storage mitigation plan. And the language there is, in each case, some, a little bit different anyway from what was in the draft opinion. And the applicant will want to devote the same attention to those as it has to the invasive species management plan.
With respect to, I'm sure that John probably will have some further comments, but with respect to the compensatory flood storage mitigation plan, my suggestion in terms of the ease of the recipient of the permit, understanding it and just complying with it, is to take out the narrative relative to what the goal is, but just to put in the bulleted points A through E what the requirements are.
That would be fine with me. I know Pat Hanlon is doing a lot of wordsmithing, but I'm wondering if in the findings, you could put what the, so we don't lose the reason for this compensatory flood storage area, or it might already be in the findings, and I'm a little confused as to which draft I'm looking at. So I appreciate that would be...
Mr. Chairman.
I appreciate what you're saying, Ms. Keeper. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just in terms of getting the findings, we can always cross-reference to make sure that, that anyone looking at this, this would know where the finding is and vice versa.
Certainly.
With respect to the proposed landscaping plan, similar comment there that the, kind of the introductory narrative is not really instructive as a condition, but the conditions follow the proposed A through H. It continues on the next page. You don't see it right there, what's on the screen, but.
And again, that's acceptable to the Conservation Commission as long as it's captured in a finding.
And just for clarification, though, the landscape plan is only for landscaping within wetland resource areas?
Yes, unless, unless the board wants to extend that, but, but these are specific to the wetland resource areas because they're requiring native species, et cetera. And we understand that for other areas that are not within wetland resource areas, that you may use, you know, traditional landscape plantings that may not be native.
So is a matter, you know, when, when the landscape architect is doing a landscaping plan, it's typically one plan. And so the board may want to consider not imposing these additional requirements on, on the upland areas, but rather it seems to create a little bit of confusion if one's having two landscaping plans submitted.
Right. And it could be, yeah, it could be one plan and then just make it clear that these specific requirements are for the wetland resource area parts of the site.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, please.
Steve Moore, as a member of the early tree committee. I only interrupt at this point because the landscape plan was also going to be helpful and useful for the pre-warden and the applicant to work together to make sure that the tree bylaw issues were followed, even though I know that the waiver was denied as unnecessary for the signature of the tree ward. And so I believe we are expecting the landscape plan to also cover the upland areas around the development.
So their, a landscape plan was filed by the applicant. It's, it should be available, but this project very specifically is under the town bylaws as they existed in 2016.
Correct.
So I, I just, I don't know what the, you know, the specifics of what the tree bylaw was back in 2016 and.
No, you're, you're corrected. At the time, it was not required for the signature of the part of it. However, the landscape plan is to confirm that we, because the applicant said that they would already worked with the tree board and were sort of counting on that commitment. And the landscape plan was going to be a part of that cooperation. With, with a specific tree focus for, for the tree ward, of course, not the rest of the plantings. I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, yeah, so the, the landscape plan should be available on the town's website at this.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Well, you're very welcome. So we were leaving, we've sort of gone a little off topic and gone back and forth, but I think we were on I 28 when we left off. Unless there's anything further on the... Regarding the plants.
And I don't have anything further on the plans. If, I don't have a landscape architect from our team on, but John, if you need to fill in being our landscape architect for the moment, if there's any specific concerns or recommendations that you may have vis-à-vis the proposed ACC letter.
I'm taking a quick look again.
Just to help you, John, understand things that are focused on vegetation, there is, is a recommendation of low nitrogen fertilizer use and limiting that. And then no herbicides or pesticides or pesticides, except as approved for invasive plant management.
Right. No, I think I definitely reviewed this previously and just looking at it again, I think it's, I think it's what we've discussed in, in the past. You know, I'm just looking rationale for removal, you know, hoping that in this plan that, that narrative will be pretty simple. It's removal of the vegetation to construct the compensatory storage area as, you know, approved as part of the comprehensive permit. But, yeah, I, Stephanie, I'm okay with this. And, and just back, if I could, while I'm, while I get the microphone to Mr. Moore, that there was a landscape plan included in the most recent plans, but it's also included as a requirement, I think it's in C1, that we provide a more detailed landscape plan for the non-wetlands portion of the property as part of the, the final plan. So the plans that are submitted to date are what's referred to in this draft decision as the approved plans, but we're going to have to prepare final detailed construction level plans. And there'll be additional landscape information provided at that stage. That's, those will be prior to building permit.
Chairman, thank you, Mr. Hesh, and that's, that's helpful.
You're welcome.
If, if we could move back to the decision, then. In I 30, again, just to carry through that 80%, it's referenced a couple of places in there at 100. And if Susan needs to jump in, if, if the October 14th letter has changed this, but I would go down to I 33, I believe. I think that that provision was going to be deleted.
Sorry, I was on mute. I'm going into I 33, let's see. Because the numbering's changed. Yeah. Yeah, because we already addressed that. Let's see, no disturbance. Was that in that, that was in the beta letter, I believe. Is that right? The original beta letter. I'm getting confused as to where things are. Marty, did you know?
Okay, yeah, I'm looking at the, the edited version of the.
Right, thank you.
Decision right now.
Okay.
And there was actually two paragraphs that talk about this, actually, no, limited activity. That was actually struck.
Yeah, it was struck. Yeah, I'm just looking at it too.
Leave my name on the screen so people will think I'm still there.
So I 33.
They will call on me.
So about halfway. So just, so are you saying we're striking I 33 to I 34, but we're leaving I 34 because there's just a formatting issue and I 34 got, starts about halfway through the paragraph under I 33?
Yes, I think that's a formatting issue.
Yeah, that's a formatting issue. So the long-term pollution prevention and operation maintenance plan still needs to be.
Yeah, we'll leave that there. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
And picking up though on the bracketed comments for I 31 and 32 relative to invasive species control is exempted. I'm assuming that that would be clarified. And it would just take out I 33.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back on that. So, so Marty, what I'm knowing, the problem is these numbers changed.
Yeah.
So no work shall be allowed within the 25 feet of any bordering or isolated vegetation that one remains in. And, and except for invasive species control that, that has been approved as per the plan or whatever. So that's right. Then the no disturbance within 50 feet that we just took out, we actually left that in and said, no disturbance shall be allowed within 50 feet of any resource area except as shown on the approved plans. And that any changes to the project plans that will result in the limit of work to be closer to bordering or isolated vegetated wetlands, or would result in further disturbance of the aura, would need authorization from the board and/or the Conservation Commission. So if you look at the prior draft from, I think, Paul and Beta, it was their I 34.
Yes.
That should remain in. And it went from I 25 to I 34. So the numbering scheme screwed up.
And then the old, this is Marty, the old I 35 is struck.
Right. And that's what this 33 is, right?
Yeah, right.
So that's why it's confusing. So we're, we're missing one.
Yes, I 34 was removed altogether.
Well, actually, you have part of it. It's I 32 here. So it's, so I 32 with the old I 34. Okay, so no disturbance shall be allowed. Oh, no, it should be changed. So no disturbance shall be allowed within 50 feet of any resource area. So that this is, except as shown in the proof plan. Yeah. So that one is the one that should go back to the draft that was Paul's previous draft. I don't know if you want to go through.
That's the one with. That's the one with the beta comments, correct?
Yes, yes.
And it, so this, this I 32 should be changed to that whole draft with beta comments I 34. And then I 33, as Marty says, is struck because we dealt with that. Then the I 34.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, the, the language in I 31 relative to any change in the project plans that would result in the limit of work closer to bordering or isolated vegetated wetland, the authorization can only come from the board, not the commission.
Okay.
Right. You could just say, discuss our opinion. Sorry about that. Yep.
And then just for clarification, is the Arlington Conservation Commission's recommendation that the condition also include that invasive species control is exempted?
Yeah.
For those provisions? Okay.
Yes.
I believe condition I 35 is to. I 34, right? That's the formatting issue. The formatting issue.
So I. Yes, there was a note on the prior version that. Said to combine. What was then twenty six and twenty seven.
Okay.
So I thirty four and I thirty five. Need to be combined.
And then I thirty six was supposed to be deleted because we have. That's a finding and we have. Defined the need for landscape plans, et cetera, so. It's not necessary. Have that here.
And I believe I forty is duplicative. My notes don't say where it's otherwise contained. But I I think it's something else in the decision.
Oh, it might be it. From I five is. Oh, no, that's not it. I thought it was up further somewhere too. Not sure where it was.
We can hunt for that.
Condition I forty one. I I I I'm not quite certain how that's enforceable. The applicant is to ensure that the proposed rain garden will function. I I think instead you would just want. To say that the details of the. Additional detail of the proposed rain garden would be shown on the final plans. I think that's. Gets the board to what it wants is to make certain that it's a, you know, a detailed design. So I would recommend that that be. Language saying. That the. That the proposed rain garden for the detail of it will be shown on the final plans and then. Include that with what's to be included on the final plans.
Yeah.
And what also we did specifically call out the rain gardens in the landscape plan, so they they have to be discussed.
Okay.
Obviously.
And then moving to the general conditions under J three, there's a somewhat of a. A sweeping statement that. The applicants are copy the the board on all correspondence. Between the applicant and any federal state or town official or commission concerning conditions set forth in this decision. I would just propose striking that. There's prior conditions in the permit that say that the applicant shall provide the board copies of all. You know, permits and approvals, state federal requirements. And I I think that's the intent of what the board wants rather than all back and forth correspondence. It it may just get into the mundane, so I would suggest striking that condition in its entirety. And and like I said, you've already built into the decision previously of requirement that the applicant copy the board and all. Permits and approvals.
I would just ask Mr. Haverty to address that.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I would say is that this provision requires the board to be provided copies of all testing results. Environmental approvals, official filings, so there's it's more than. Just. Just other approvals. I I do agree that perhaps every single piece of correspondence is a bit of overkill and more than the board. Administratively is going to want to deal with. And I think it's probably a happy meeting.
And the applicant would agree to that. That. If it's if it's limited to, I think approvals would be previously addressed, Paul, but. You know, in addition to all approvals, the applicant shall provide the board. You know, copies of. Testing results. I I'm not quite certain what else the board. Official filings, environmental approvals and other permits.
So the recommendation there is just to to remove the all correspondence to just be more particular.
I would I would change that to the applicant shall provide the board copy of all. Testing results, official filings, environmental approvals and other permits issued for the projects.
Okay.
Right, concerning the conditions set forth in this decision. So moving that phrase from below to where all correspondence had previously been.
Okay.
Under. Mr. Chairman, I wonder if I could, before we get too far away from I. I was a little slow, but we do have two conditions about de-watering. One of them is that I six and that's taken from the eleven sixty five R decision and the other one is I forty, which we talked about briefly. And they both deal with the same subject, but I don't have an understanding as to which one is. As to which one is preferable. They're not exactly the same.
That's I six.
I I believe the applicant was fine with I six.
I wonder if Ms. Chapnik is also happy with I six.
Um, does I six have the. Number five in it, the de-watering shall not take place in any manner that leads to water being discharged or allowed to flow into property now. So they're basically very similar, except I'm not sure if that's in my six. And that was done expressly. For a butters. Oh, but this one also has authorization from the DPW.
We could take part five from I forty and insert it into I six.
That would be fine. Because it basically has the same, you know, pass through filters on site settling basis. So, yeah, and and just add at the. Item number four. Thank you.
Chase, is it J six we're heading towards?
Uh, Jake, I was gonna direct us to J five.
If I, okay.
Yeah, it's currently drafted in the event that the applicant or its management company fails to maintain stormwater management system for the project. In accordance with this operation and maintenance plan within fourteen days of notification. It it's, I would suggest. Because something. It the it's phrased a little bit backwards. So basically what it's saying is if you get a notice from the town. That there's a problem. It has to be maintained and I would just suggest that. In case a part does is isn't able to come in, that instead of saying fails to maintain, but fails to me. Fails to advance efforts to maintain. So, you know, to address to. Start working on the solution or addressing what the problem is, but if there's. An issue that. Like I said, there's a part that needs to be ordered and it's not coming in. It doesn't mean that the applicant has. Just sat back and done nothing. They're working on it, but the fourteen day time period, the part's not able to come in.
How about fails to take appropriate steps to maintain the stormwater management system?
That that's probably fine, Paul. But but you see where I'm getting at. It's it's just saying. If the applicant sits back and does nothing, that's one thing, but if the applicant's actively trying to get the solution in place. They shouldn't, they shouldn't be penalized for that. And and just for clarification, then in item J six, condition J six rather. The second sentence talks about the proposed recreational areas. I I think that means the proposed garden areas. Is that correct?
Probably language from the. Wire decision. But there are.
Over what what used to be the area on the western side that had formerly been parking. It's now like. With there's gardens sort of established there or.
There's also.
House of Recreation or something.
But I believe there's also woodland areas that are being maintained as well. On the development parcel.
But is that is that what that means? It says proposed recreational areas.
And I think that was originally there when there was intended to be a playground. Mr. Chair. Landscape areas.
Right, and then the phrase, the construction and operation just seems a little, I wasn't entirely certain what the where the board was going with that. Or whoever drafted the condition was going with that.
This is Sir Valak. I think Mr. Klein had might, I think Mr. Chairman might be right. That it is referring to an earlier iteration which included a playground.
So in that case, we strike the second sentence.
I would think that it makes sense, but again, this is for the board's consideration.
Yeah.
And then under J seven, I suggest striking the first introductory clause notwithstanding any provision. In J six, just started with, the town shall have no obligations. Relating to the. I I would just say relating to the conservation parcel. Construction, again, the whole point of the conservation parcel is not to construct. So I would just say relating to the conservation parcel. And then I would suggest unless it may be agreed upon by the parties. Within a separate MOU. And then if I could just. Quickly go down to the proposed. Waiver actions.
Yeah.
I, there's under five for. Aura under article or section twenty five, excuse me, of the wetland regulations. It's proposed to be. Waived as unnecessary. Did additional language come up here because, oh, I'm sorry. I would just suggest that it be. Approved consistent with the final plans.
Chairman Klein.
Yes, please.
That was acceptable to the Conservation Commission because we consider it similar to waiver three. And if you scroll up, your language was waiver granted to allow work within the aura as shown on the approved plans.
Okay.
We recommend.
First sentence.
We we had we had recommended. We we just want to make sure that that we're not saying that that we're waiving your as a resource area. That's not what we're doing, but okay, thank you.
And and the applicant's fine with that.
Okay.
Okay. So waiver three will same language as three.
Um, I believe that we've already talked about. Fond proposed. And then under seven, the wetland consultant fees. The the regulation isn't worded to allow. Kind of like continuing oversight by the board, but those wetland regulation fees. Or consultant fees, excuse me, they they deal with when an applicant. Files a notice of intent under the local bylaw that the commission can then retain a wetlands consultant. Relative to reviewing that NOI and issuing an order of condition. I think the the language, I didn't have a chance to go back and look at the twenty. The the version of the regulation in place when we applied, but the current one. Which kind of underscores this is. Consultant fee upon receipt of a notice of intent abbreviated notice of resource area delineation. Or request for determination of applicability. Or any point during the hearing process, the commission is authorized to require the applicant to pay a fee for the reasonable costs and expenses. Born by the commission for specific expert engineering and other consultant services deemed necessary by the commission to come to a final decision on the application. This fee is called the consultant fee. And so. Paul may weigh weigh in and say, well, it's 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 waived because it's not necessary, but. The proposed board action here is denying it. Because it's needed due to the complexity of that. So again, going back to what what the regulation says, what is to be used for, it's to review an order of. Notice of intent or an ANRAD. And then to issue an order of conditions. And so that's not warranted here because this is a master permit substituting them all. Now, obviously, when the applicant goes back before the commission under the act. If they feel the need for consultant fees, they have the ability to employ fifty three G and to ask for those under the act. So we would suggest that. Is either be granted or just denied as unnecessary because the. Master per the comp permit is a master permit, subsuming all of that. So the board doesn't have to retain a wetlands consultant to review any local. Application filed under his local bylaw before.
This was unclear to me, makes a little more sense the way you explained it. We had retained this for the one one six five R. Massive. So I I am fine with saying that it's it's waived because it's unnecessary at this point. If if that's, if Paul, Paul tells us or some other lawyer. That that interpretation is correct and that then the Conservation Commission could retain. And apply for the the consultant fees under the filing under the state. Wetlands Protection Act. So I'm fine with that as long as the legal argument is correct and I'm I'm not, I don't understand it as as well as others.
Mr. Chairman, the the legal argument is correct. You've already gone through your review process. You've already imposed what peer review consultant fees. You have deemed necessary to review this. Bylaw and the Conservation Commission certainly has full authority to charge review fees under the Wetlands Protection. So this isn't going to hinder their ability to do that. It's a completely separate process. Whatever you say. In this decision can't grant or take away jurisdiction from the Conservation Commission as part of that process. So I I agree that. So I agree that this waiver can be denied as unnecessary. I would retain the sentence that the board does not require additional authority to impose a fee for the retaining of an outside wetlands consultant, which it has done for this. And I will leave it at that.
And then scrolling down to 22, I believe, the off-street parking requirements. The, it grants the waiver. However, there's, there's actually kind of two parts to it. So there's for the senior living, the analysis there talks about that the parking is 0.76 spaces, which is correct. But there's also with respect to the duplex units. And it was found, it was in the findings, I believe. I don't know the number of the findings, but it does recognize at the end units there, we'd have one parking space. And so we would ask for that to be, just make certain that that's carried over into the grant of a waiver there. Because it's only addressing the waiver as to the senior living, but it doesn't address that for the duplex end units.
Because in 2016, we still required two parking spaces. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Did, yeah.
At this point, I think I've, I think I've hit the items on the conditions and the waivers that I wanted to address. If I could just be indulged one moment to open up to my team if there was anything in the conditions or waivers that I missed or that was a concern.
At this point, is there any further from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just previously, when we were talking about transportation, I unwisely deferred talking, conferring with Mr. Deruter about the comparing the amount of additional traffic generation on a daily basis here with the community. And that was a long time ago and we're getting really tired. I'd like to get that in the record because if we don't have it in the record, we can't rely on it. And Mr. Deruter at least has done a rough calculation to give us an overall idea of what that proportion might be, although I emphasize that it is rough and not something very precise that we could work with. And wonder, I think it takes about a minute and a half, but I wonder at the chairman's discretion when the right time is to deal with that.
Certainly, on this, on this keeper's checking her notes as we get time to do that.
Tyler is, I don't know if Tyler is still here. Actually, it's very late. We've been at this for three hours.
Sure, I could if I may, Mr. Chair. This is Tyler Deruter with Beta.
Certainly.
So we had taken a look at some of the, I guess what I'll call a quick look at the neighborhood trip generation for the number of buildings or households that are within the neighborhood that do not front Lake Street. So houses that would have to use the neighborhood streets. And ran a trip generation calculation for those and compared it to the trip generation presented as part of the proposed project. And in the comparison, we found that the proposed project represents approximately 18% increase in trips in the neighborhood. I don't know if I need to go any further detail to that.
Just if I can, just as quickly, my understanding of the way the calculation is reached is by taking the trip generation figures for single family and for two family. Basically, that's not precisely the way the categories are listed in ITE. And just assume that the neighborhood is half one and half the other. Basically, the two families have more trip generation, obviously, than the single families do. So it could be an error because the mix might be skewed towards single or duplexes. But mathematically, that error doesn't really amount to very much. That in anything in the reasonable range is going to give you a percentage that is similar, though not identical to what Mr. Deruter just indicated. Tyler, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. We've basically taken the two, single family and multifamily land uses and averaged the two together and then applied that average over the number of households within the neighborhood that we counted up. You know, in a rough estimate, estimate there. So in doing that, we can get a general ballpark of what the neighborhood might expect per ITE. And to the point that was made, you know, that that may slightly overestimate the number of trips given maybe a higher percentage of single family homes or whatever have you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the reason for going through this is that we were asked last time to take, to consider this question. And while this isn't as a careful census of every individual house and how many people are in it. It gives you sort of an order of magnitude number that relates to some citizen concern expressed two weeks ago.
Thank you very much for bringing that up. Ms. Kiefer, did you find anything further?
I don't believe I have anything further at this time.
Thank you. All right. So in a moment, I will open tonight's hearing for public comment on the revised draft decision. First, I really appreciate everyone's patience. I did not anticipate this portion would take this long. And second, a brief review of guidelines for this portion of the hearing. Public questions and comments will only be taken as they relate to the matter at hand and should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing our decision. The board will insist that comments be limited to items either in the draft decision or items that are omitted from the draft decision. To provide for an orderly flow, the chair will assist the individual public speakers to limit their comments to five minutes. The procedure for requesting to speak will be the same as for previous hearings. Please select the raise hand button from the comments tab on Zoom or dial star nine on your phone to indicate you would like to speak. When called upon, please identify yourself by name and address. You'll be given your five minutes for your questions and comments regarding the draft decision. All questions are to be addressed through the chair. Please remember to speak clearly. Once all public comments have been heard, public comment period will be closed for the public hearing. And I'll do my best to show the section of the draft decision that is being discussed. The board has, you know, over the past year and a half, two years, I've received a very lengthy record of public opinion in regards to the propriety of the project and to its impact on wetlands, its impacts on traffic and the like. At this portion of, at this junction in the hearing process, we really are discussing what elements are to be included in a potential draft decision, which is what we're looking at here. And so I really asked the public's indulgence to try to stay as tightly as we can to items that are in the decision and not to stray from that. So with that, we do have a list and the first name, Mr. Euroich. Hope you're on mute, sir. Sorry.
How's that?
That is wonderful.
There you go. My name is John Euroich. I'm a 53-year resident of the town. I live at the corner of Little John and March Street. First and foremost, while you were talking about traffic just a few minutes ago, 90% of this traffic coming out of this place is going to be coming down Little John Street. So what all the houses you counted in the neighborhood, Little John is going to get clobbered with all the daily counts that you're going to have. That's horrible. Going back to a discussion earlier on regarding the Saturdays, Sundays and holidays, I want to go on the record as being a very, very loud no to Saturdays, Sundays and holidays. That's 102, 104 days a year of construction noise we don't want. Saturdays and Sundays and holidays are family days, barbecues, playing in the yard, playing in the street. If my neighbors would please stick with me on this one. If the owner is going to not own the conservation land, it's going to go to somebody else. Is the $350,000 maintenance that they pledged a couple of years ago, are we going to lose that as well? You remember that $350,000. I'd be interested to know if that money is gone because of this new change in bait and switch, if you will. The 7:30 to 5:30 hours, that's a 10-hour day. I don't see why it has to be 5:30. Can we make it 7:30 to 4:30? We discussed that earlier tonight. Lastly, I would hope that the town has some sort of inspection going on on at least a weekly basis to monitor what goes on in a site, in a project the size. I see too much bad construction practices happening when they put all these duplexes on Little John, I mean, on Dorothy and Mart and Mary Street. They don't patch pavement well at all. It's horrible, as a matter of fact. I would hope that the town provides us with construction management at least on a weekly basis. So Saturday, Sunday's holidays, no, 7:30 to 4:30. The $350,000 that was going to be pledged. Site inspection. Oh, yes. And let me reiterate what Ms. Norris said earlier. The parking of all vehicles on the property, not on the street. That's on your page 37, item E16. Thank you very much. I appreciate the work that you do. I hope you understand this is my neighborhood. My neighbors love this neighborhood. Okay, this is not good for us. Thank you. Good night.
Absolutely. Thank you. Ms. Kiefer, just to clarify, the ownership of the Conservation Park parcel has no effect on the pledge of the owner to provide $350,000 over 10 years for the preservation of that property, correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
And to Mr. Clipfel, would a 7:30 to 4:30 workday be something that would work for this development, for a weekday workday?
You're on mute.
The question, 7:30 to 4:30 instead of 7:30 to 5:30?
I said five. 7:30 to 4:30, how many hours is that? About eight hours? It's got to be. You said 7:30 to 4:30, right?
7:30 to 4:30 was the question.
I think that could work. That's 4.5 and
Sorry, having a hard time hearing you.
He is calculating.
Oh, calculating. Thank you.
We'll go for that.
I guess there is some, somebody can drive in and park and be there without doing, doing work. Not making any noise before 7:30, right?
Noise.
Yeah, so the way the town bylaw is written is that then it's a noise, it's a noise ordinance. So there's that's the operation of, you know, exterior equipment.
Yeah, okay, that's, I think that's fine. The operation of equipment between 7:30 and 4:30 is is, that's what it was. Okay.
And then what would the weekend be? That remain the same?
I think you had originally indicated that you'd be willing to forego Sunday and holiday hours.
That's correct.
And so Saturday, the Saturday hours, we would need to, has not been discussed. They are in the town bylaws. They're intentionally later to allow people an opportunity to sleep in a little bit.
I think it was suggested, I don't remember exactly, it was nine to
Might have been nine to five instead of eight to six.
Yeah, I think that's okay. Nine to five.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
So far, Mr. Eurovich has only been the only person that has had a chance to weigh in on this. And I think that we might want to have the discussion about Saturday after more people have had a chance to do this. I will point out that this is a noise ordinance and the primary interest here may not be noise, but activity on the street. So we ought to at least keep in mind that it's somewhat more general than the interest is in the than the interest is in the, in the noise ordinance. But I, you know, obviously, people have a choice to make, but they don't actually have a choice. They have choices to what they would prefer. Whether they'd like the process to go a little faster by allowing work on Saturdays subject to the noise ordinance as it is, or whether they would like to encourage the applicant to take a little extra time and give them all or part of their Saturdays.
Okay, that's well taken. With that, I'll move to the next name on the list with Mr. McKinnon. Mr. McKinnon, are you there? Come back to Mr. McKinnon. I had Jennifer Watson on next, but I don't know if she's, she heard she's lowered her hand. Ms. Watson? Mr. Moore.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. First is a resident of the town. I'm referencing here the finding on page 20, number 73 to do with the parcel as well as the October 4th letter that was generated by the attorneys relative to the parcel, the open space parcel that is. I know that there's been a lot of discussion in the town over the past, I don't know, three, four days, something like that to do with this, to do with this open space parcel and the fact that the applicant is now going to retain ownership. I think originally it was proposed as a kind of sweetener of the deal. Basically, the open space being donated to the town, transferred to the town for control as opposed to retained by the owner. And that now seems to have changed very much at the last minute here, it seems, or maybe I just didn't understand the MOU process. This is kind of a sudden, large-scale change. And I think it's leaving a bad taste in many people's mouths. It looks sort of like a going back on a previous promise that was an important promise made as part of the project. Again, maybe I don't understand clearly the MOU process, but I hope that that under those discussions, the potential donation of the property to the town for ownership and permanent control of the open space part would be reconsidered. Because I think there's a lot of concern about perhaps any covenants being put on the property now in perpetuity might somehow be undone in the future. But that's just, that's a personal concern. And secondly, as a member of the um, concern. Uh, and secondly, as a member of the, uh, tree committee, uh, if you go to, uh, page fifty-five, which is item waiver number ten, uh, I know that, um, uh, there's, this was rolled into one of those things. I believe the, the request for a way was unnecessary because comprehensive permit process subsumed all of those bylaw concerns. And, uh, it said that the, uh, the applicant was going to basically, uh, substantively comply with the bylaw, the two thousand and sixteen version of tree bylaw. Um, and I want to, uh, remind the applicant again that that needs, uh, working with the tree warden, although his approval is not required in two thousand and sixteen, as it is now on the building checklist. Uh, working closely with him is, is important. The landscape plan that's being generated as part of the final plans is important to help make that happen. Um, as, as well as submission of a tree plan, uh, related to the trees, both along the public ways and, and for the setbacks in the project. Um, that, that, that is, I believe the applicant is already committed to comply with all of those things. I just want to reiterate that for the record, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
To the chairman, if I may.
Uh, yes, Ms. Kiefer?
Uh, just to address Mr. Moore's comments, um, I'll do a reverse order. Um, uh, yes, the, the applicant has agreed to work with the tree warden and, and submit the information. Um, and then with respect to the, um, open space parcel, um, it's, it's, it's actually, it's, it's not a, a sudden change. Um, it was, I, I can't remember when it was first. It was going to be, um, initially conveyed to a, uh, to a third party. Um, and now it's just going to be, uh, now it's going to be a conservation restriction. Um, but I, I think two points that, um, are, are relevant and may provide some comfort. Um, within the, um, imposing it to be a, a conservation restriction, um, the applicant's amenable and has agreed that it, it will be available publicly for, um, passive recreation. Um, and so there's, there is still a, a public, um, availability of it, if you will. Um, so, um, I just wanted to underscore that it really, it, it has been discussed for a bit. This, this model with a conservation restriction, um, and that there is public benefits that are, you know, desired by the town and intended by the applicant. Um, and then I, I think maybe just the last point is one of, one of the initial discussions, um, talking about the MOU, there, there had been actually hesitancy by the town not wanting to acquire it. And we were looking for a, a third party to acquire it. So, um, it's, you know, I, I think that there was, um, some, some that in part, you know, weighed in to our decision, but, um, but I think the important part of it, as I stated previously, is just that it's not, um, it's not intended to cut out the, um, the surrounding community that it will be made, made available, um, for public use and, and, you know, public access, if you will. Um, so I hope that addresses the concerns that you raised.
Thank you, Ms. Kiefer.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Kiefer.
Uh, next on my list, uh, was Jason Flick, but his hand is down. Um, which brings up, um, Ms. Keith Lucas.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. How are you?
I'm fine. Thank you. How are you?
Doing well. Thank you. Heather Keith Lucas from Ten Mott Street tonight.
Please.
Thank you. Uh, the, regarding the construction start time, um, not going to weigh in the time of, time itself, but I want to make the point that the pandemic has changed people's work patterns. Meaning many people now work from home and people are expecting to work from home moving forward more than, more so than going into the office. So the noise generating from this project will impact all of us during the day. The noises and, and the trucks, they, they already disrupt our, our sleep. We hear that from Route Two. It wakes it up, wakes us up. It shakes our houses. And trucks to be here before eight AM or even arriving before then, sounds like just a disruptive way to start, start our day. To Mr. Hanlon's point, any noise, not just the operating construction, but the arrival of, of many people who are going to be working in that area uh, will impact the noise quality in, in the neighborhood, which, which is quite quiet in um, most of, most of the time. I was going to say at night, but it is, uh, during the day as well, unless you're hearing the squeals of laughter, um, from the kids, um, who are playing during the day. If we could go to, um, section forty-eight on page fourteen.
Okay.
So this paragraph here talks about the, the traffic and, and the volume and, uh, the overall neighborhood concern. And what we talked about on our last CBA meeting for this project was the, the rush hour traffic volume at a handful of the neighborhood inter intersections to Lake Street. And it appears that, you know, section fifty-seven, a little later on, there's a placeholder to include these traffic volumes to be included in the ZBA decision. And I just ask that the ZBA include the known traffic volumes here within the section forty-eight as it is directly relevant to the applicant's estimation of trips per day generated. In other words, like the, the relativity of the traffic increases are important for the ZBA's discernment of, of the development of the size of whether it's appropriate for this neighborhood. Um, and to our discussions at the last CBA meeting on this topic, uh, on an additional suggestion of just calculating those four hundred and twelve trips if spread out across maybe a ten or twelve hour period, because that does equate to today's current state rush hour um, to be an all-day impact to this neighborhood.
And that would be as opposed to being the concentration at, at two times in the day.
Correct. And, and perhaps that, I mean, I, I know the, the four hundred and twelve trips, um, that's estimated by, by the applicant also is considering that they're going to spread out deliveries throughout the day and not have those fall on more rush hour time periods in part because of the traffic concerns that exist on Lake Street already. Um, and how that will have downstream impacts to, to other towns as well, uh, during, during the rush hour time. Um, but to have that as a, going from, you know, very few cars, if any, going down any of our streets during the day to, um, a rush hour traffic, that, that's quite a difference.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
I should just emphasize that the four twelve number comes directly from the IT. Uh, it, I think includes mode split, but it does not include various other things like jetties and, and moving your time a day around and so forth. It's, it's quite, uh, it, it's quite objective and, and not, and much of the rest of the things that the applicant and others were talking about are not boiled into that figure.
Thank you.
If I may, in section fifty-seven, which is on page sixteen, it begins with, in an attempt to address these challenges. Um, and I don't, wi- with respect to the traffic and, and characterizing the reduction of, of fifteen percent from a prior proposal. I, I just don't find the characteri- characterization of, in an attempt to address these challenges of this significant traffic impact to this neighborhood appropriate. Um, I, I'd suggest and ask the ZBA to consider removing this, given its subjectivity. Um, the relative, the calculate, the recalculation of the estimated trav- uh, sorry. The recalculation of estimated volume of traffic does not address the challenges, but quite simply is a recalculation due to the change in building use that's being portrayed. Um, with respect to just the, the traffic overall, I didn't find any evidence within the draft decision that mitigates the massive traffic impact, the development as proposed will have on the neighborhood. Um, it doesn't appear to have a contingency truly to address the traffic concerns. Um, without an alternate route to exit and enter the area. It, it really puts an undue burden specifically on Little John Street, but also into smaller neighborhood streets. So the only way I see possible to truly mitigate the neighborhood concern of this traffic is by eliminating the assisted living building. Sorry, the, the senior housing, um, and, and allowing the project to have the duplex-only housing along Dorothy Road.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, uh, Mr. Ide.
Uh, good evening. Yeah, pardon me. I can't speak. It's getting late. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Uh, this is Nicholas Ide. I live at one fifty-two Lake Street, corner of Lake and Little Town. So, uh, first of all, thank you very much for your continued support and your openness to hear residents' concerns. Um, with reference to the draft decision that we're discussing tonight, uh, I have two comments. So the first is, started off as against item fifty-five, but, uh, as others have mentioned, it's really item fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven and forty-eight. It's that whole ensemble of things. So, um, one thing is just, please note that Lake Street is not the right benchmark at all. The right benchmark is really the traffic that originates from and returns to the neighborhood. As Mr. Dibias, you mentioned at the previous meeting, the Little John Dorothy intersection is perhaps the most relevant benchmark. That's literally where the complex would have its sole entrance and exit. Uh, it's a very sleepy, uh, location at the moment. Uh, and also, please note that much of the traffic that, if you did an actual study, any traffic you would have logged in any study would include a substantial amount of both cut-through traffic off of Lake Street uh, and Thorne Dyke Field traffic, especially in the evenings. Uh, just last week, I was standing, talking to my neighbor next door, and, uh, I've watched many, many cars, uh, cutting through Mary Street, blowing through the stop sign. Uh, this is what they do. Uh, and it was, and it was all during the, the Lake Street backup in the evening. Uh, and it's in violation of the signage that's clearly posted off of Lake Street. And it was actually substantial enough that a police detail was brought in to reduce it. Uh, so I went out for a walk. When I came back, the, the police were there and the, the problem had gone down. But th- this is what we're dealing with even now, uh, without this project. So, um, just to continue on this, this first comment, um, based on Mr. Hanlon's pertinent questions, it really seems like we still have questions about the existing traffic. And as a resident, I would like to ask the board to consider inclusion of, you know, a condition regarding an additional traffic study to the board's satisfaction, uh, as well as a condition that, uh, the approval would depend on the traffic increase due to this completed project being qualitatively shown to be no more than a small percentage. Hence qualitatively not significantly affecting the existing neighborhood traffic and quality of life. So, Mr. DeRouer, uh, commented this evening about an eighteen percent increase overall. That's significant. Uh, that's quite significant. If you raise my salary eighteen percent, wow, that's great. You raise my taxes eighteen percent. Oh, my goodness, right? So that's eighteen percent's a lot. Uh, and then if you combine that with Mr. Yurovitz's comments about the specific focused, focused effects on Little John Street, that's very pertinent as well. So, uh, that's my first, uh, comment. And my second comment, which is a bit more brief, is about, uh, item E sixteen. So I agree with Mr. Hanlon. Uh, we should consider no project construction work on weekends and holidays. This project is massively different than any other that we've ever had in the neighborhood. The other projects are generally duplexes. They're generally one at a time. Uh, that's pretty different. Uh, the disruptions that neighborhood from a project of this size will be significant during the construction. Please note also that during the week, children do start going to school as early as seven AM. I know my kids do. And perhaps even earlier at other households, um, based on this neighborhood's location and only having access to the outside world via Lake Street, there's really no kind of back way to and from school. You have to go out of the neighborhood on the places where people are going to be coming in and out for construction traffic and everything else. So it's really not clear to me that any level of police detail will be sufficient to help keep the neighborhood children safe during the week. And it's pretty clear that construction of this scale on weekends is going to have a negative impact in the neighborhood. Um, so I also agree with Mr. Mills and Mr. Yurovitz, uh, that traffic for the current residents should not be impeded uh, by parking for the construction. Uh, so the last sentence in the section E sixteen is very important. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. Uh, that was all that I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list uh, was Anna Kuharsky.
Hi, thank you. Um, I'm Anna Kuharsky at thirty-four Mott Street. I had a couple of questions and comments. My first one is also on section forty-seven, uh, fifty-seven, excuse me, about the traffic. Um, this paragraph had claimed to address the traffic challenges, but I also agree with the previous, uh, comment that I didn't find any evidence to address the challenges of the traffic impact, um, particularly from a traffic safety standpoint. Um, since, you know, the streets are, you know, very quiet and local. My street is a one-way street. Um, right now, there are only stop signs, um, on a number of the streets. And there have been accidents, um, at the corner of Mary and Little John. So I'm just wondering if there are any traffic conditions that would be implemented or, um, if there would be any additional stop signs or stoplights, um, that would be important to add in if, if Beta has any experience of that. And, uh, who would be responsible for the cost if it was determined that additional street signage would be implemented?
Um, that's a very good question. Um, I don't know. This line of, I can address that question, um, on behalf of the planning department.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question? I had to step away for just a second.
Yeah, no problem at all. Um, the question is, um, if, does, is anyone going to, uh, if, if you don't mind my paraphrasing, is, is there any looking at whether additional, uh, signage within the town-owned streets? Um, is there any investigation as to whether that would be either required or desired? And then if such, who would be paying for that?
So signage is in like road signs?
Yeah, so. Signs, restrictions and, and the like.
I don't have an answer for that right now. I would need to consult with our transportation, our senior transportation planner.
Okay, but there has, to, to your knowledge and certainly to my knowledge, there has been no investigation of that.
No, not to my knowledge.
Um, and my second comment about the traffic is that, um, because the Hardy School lets out in the afternoon, there's actually a third, uh, traffic jam in the middle of the afternoon between about two and three on Lake Street. And that's when many children are walking home. Some I've seen walking home by themselves. So an increase in traffic would be, um, present, I think, a danger for those children walking home during that in the afternoon as well. Um, and finally, I just want to express my disappointment about, um, the bait and switch as has been used previously, um, about the parcel of land being donated by the owner. Regardless of whether it is maintained for public use, I think just, um, the fact that this has been a consistent um, behavior throughout the last few years, um, it's very disappointing now in the last minute having the owner, uh, take back that parcel of land regardless of any conservation contingency. So I just want to express that this is disturbing and I hope the ZBA takes that into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, just a, a quick follow-up question, um, it could, it could be to anyone in the neighborhood. Um, what is the start and close time for Hardy School? You know?
It's, um, eight, ten AM to two, ten PM, but then there are also. But then there are also kids who are in the after-school program, and they're still around and
Kids get into middle school and high school.
Great. Thank you for that. Um, next on my list is Helene Martel.
Hi, I reside at Seven Osborne Road, and I am on the corner or on one house down from Margaret Street. And then if you go one more block towards Thorne Dyke Field, you have Edith, and then you're in the park, you're in the field, you're basically in the swamp. And we have had a big turnover of houses for sale recently, and we have a really large new crop of young kids. And they are enjoying their basketball hoops, you know, on Osborne Road. I'm trying to address, I guess, the E sixteen, the construction work schedule. And just, we all know that this will just bring in the percentage of, of extra traffic. And also, so the traffic and the construction schedule, we all know the kids, if the ball goes rolling down to Margaret Street, eventually one of them is just gonna, you know, be at risk. Kids playing ball, it just happens. So I can't see having the construction work on Saturdays and Sundays. I just think that's anti-family and puts the kids at more risk. We also know the kids are gonna suffer by having Thorne Dyke playing field flood more. I, I'm not a hydro engineer, but this project will result, I think, in less playing time for the teams down at Thorne Dyke Field with all the re-navigation. And I don't know if it was brought up before. I guess I, last summer, we, the area around here was just besieged by insects because of all the standing water in Thorne Dyke Field. And I know it was a rainy summer all over, but the backyards could not be used. Just being outside often during the day was just not viable because of all the insects. I did call the Department of Public Health, and they were aware of it. So again, we, we flood. I've been here for twenty-four years. I got my pipes. I got my hoses. Will be flooding more and with more traffic. I certainly just feel, well, I feel trepidation. So any way to limit this is, is what I'm proposing. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next on my list, Mr. Di Biase.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Robert Di Biase, twenty-nine Little John Street. We're basically the last house on the right at the entrance of what this proposed development is gonna be. So I guess I have five points to make. I guess we'll start with, you know, before any construction starts in the day, we've heard the talk of people allowed to pull up ahead of time before the hours. Well, that's gonna bring in delivery trucks. If we're doing modules, you could find somebody camped out there at five AM with the truck running. My bedroom's on the second floor at the front of the house. I'm the first guy next to your development. I'm gonna listen to that guy's engine running at six AM while he's waiting to unload. My concerns are the module units or whatever deliveries you have being camped out in front of my home, that's gonna restrict me from coming and going on a normal basis. This is a thickly settled district, a residential district that is not set up for this type of development. I myself have been involved in developments of this side in magnitude in Cambridge as well as in Boston. And quite frankly, I've seen modules come and go. I know what it's like. So it's not like you're gonna be telling me, oh, don't worry about it. I know where it is. I'm very much concerned about whether or not my family will be able to come and go on a regular basis during the day as people are camped out in front of my home on a regular basis. Mostly, we're gonna be looking at modules, and if they're left here overnight, they shouldn't be. There should be no modules left in front of our home. Then I start to look at, you know, our traffic. I made a point a couple of weeks ago where I said I have a nest cam set up outside. Anytime a car goes by, it automatically clocks them, knows what's coming and going. The average on a regular weekly days, daily basis in front of my home is about fifty to sixty cars. On a weekend, it's forty-five. So take your number now of four hundred and twelve and add that in. That magnitude is enormous. The impact, the number that you're using is filtering out to, to little, rather, Lake Street is basically being pyramid through as if you were sitting on Lake Street. You're not. You're all the way in. So the numbers increase at the furthest point, decrease as you leave the neighborhood, because now you're picking up more and more homes in the average. Lastly, my concern is days of work and work hours. We are, we're all used to seven-thirty to four-thirty. That's nothing new. But weekends, that's a big problem, because as we said, this is very thickly settled district. This isn't your normal plop of building in the middle of a residential dwelling area. You're not on Mass Ave, and you're not on a major thoroughway. You know, when you look at E sixteen and fifty-seven, I think there's adjustments that have to be made to those. And, you know, as again, the burden, burden of traffic is gonna be in front of my home. And I should not be restricted at any time of day coming and going from my own home, as well as my wife and children. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for taking the time to listen to me, and hopefully we can address these issues or they get handled properly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Stamps.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And thanks so much to everybody on the ZBA. You people are in CONCOM. You're, you're fabulous, and the town is very, very lucky to have you. I had just a couple of comments. Mr. Moore is on the tree committee, and so am I, and I'm not sure. He said my address is in Stamps, thirty-nine Bratton Street. I just wanted to be able to explain to people to what extent the developer will have to comply with the, with the bylaw as it was in twenty-sixteen. So I specifically wanted to ask, for example, because you said they are going to comply with the substance of the bylaws, and you're not granting a waiver. So for example, would they have to submit a tree plan prior to work starting on the property? And under the twenty-sixteen version, the tree plan would show all of the trees that were healthy and ten inches in diameter in the setback of the property. And they would have to have, present a plan showing those trees and what they plan to do with them, whether they want to leave them, and they're going to take them down, and have the tree warden look at it and approve that plan. And if they were going to take down trees, they had to pay, I think it was five hundred dollars per tree to the town, or they could replant trees in there instead. And those were the specifics of the bylaw in twenty-sixteen. And I was wondering if they're actually going to follow that procedure.
Ms. Kiefer, can you address that? I believe it's waiver number ten.
Yes, it is.
Sorry about that. So with respect to presenting the tree plan, yes, we've agreed to that. The, the one difference that I believe that you mentioned is stamps that would, would not be is the, the need to get an approval. That's because this is a master permit, and it assumes all of those. But the applicant has agreed that it would submit the, the plan in accordance with the requirements that were in effect at the time that the permit application was submitted.
Does that also mean, Mr. Chair, that the applicant would not have to pay that fee or plants, specifically plant trees to replace the trees to be removed? How, how does that part of the bylaw work in this situation?
So Ms. Kiefer, I believe that the, we have a landscape plan from, from the applicant, and that that would be what, what the final condition is in regards to disposition of trees that are existing on the land. But is the, I don't think we've really had a substantive discussion about the, the, the cost per tree for removal.
I, I believe that that was, it is not any tree on the property. So, and, and Ms. Stamps outlined what, what they're, which trees are talking about, and it's, it's an either/or. It's you could replant or, or pay an amount for trees that are ten inch diameter or greater within the defined areas.
So the, okay, so the intention is that, that once the, once the current tree plan has been submitted, has been developed and submitted, and we have the, the final landscape plan, that there will be a calculation of which trees have, have been replaced, and then what, what replacement fees are still required? Is that your understanding?
That, that is, and, and in case I'm misspeaking on behalf of the applicants, I'll, I guess I will ask Art and Gwen to clarify that. But that was my understanding.
Ms. Stamps.
Um, okay, I thought they were going to clarify that, but maybe they're not going to.
Oh, actually, let me, let me check, because they maybe just unmute. I don't know.
They, they look like they kind of want to talk, but I'm not sure what they're doing. She, in fact, I think I see Gwen talking.
Okay.
Hear her.
We, we've lost our, our visual, but we, we will comply with whatever the tree ordinance is, you know, saying. We've been told, and, you know, that, that so much is an invasive tree shrubs and so on. So we don't, we don't know how, how a distinction is made between what is an invasive and being asked to be removed, removed. If that, how that counts. But anyway, we, we're, we'll comply.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, I have another couple of quick questions, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Stamps.
Okay. In section F, F-two, it says that the, the vendors will be required to use quote-unquote smaller delivery vehicles. I, I don't know. Is that even enforceable? What, what does that mean, smaller compared to what?
I'll find it. There we go. So I think that the intent there is that the, because of the, the limited size of the access roads on the property, that that large vehicles that are unable to navigate the property would not be brought onto the property.
Oh, so actually, you mean small delivery vehicles, not smaller, probably?
Yeah.
I thought they, I just didn't know how you would define smaller. Smaller than what?
Right.
You know, fourteen-wheeler, whatever.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
I think that Ms. Stamps makes a really good point there. And there, I'm, I'm guessing that the applicant has an understanding about what a smaller vehicle, delivery vehicle would be. And I think that we need to have something more precise, or, or nobody will have a clue whether they're violating this or not. So, you know, I, I think the intent is to bring in things that minimize the disturbance in the neighborhood, and some thought needs to be given to giving us advice as to where that line ought to be.
And I had two other, two other points, Mr. Chair. The, right under that F-three, it says that there will be a jitney that will be available seven days a week to, to drive people around and to the, the T and other quote-unquote other local destinations. Number one, I didn't, we wanted to put in a time, seven days a week. It could be only available from twelve to one, or, or it could be nine to five. It seems like maybe there ought to be some description of what the expectation is for when that's gonna be available. And also, I didn't know if perhaps there would be something specific about they, it will go to a grocery store, and it will go to a pharmacy, because those are the two main places that people need on a regular basis.
Okay. Certainly, the discussions that have occurred today has definitely indicated that it would be going to, to include grocery shopping and pharmacy shopping and things along those lines. Are, but I would ask Art and Gwen, if there's this, if there are specific times that are being determined at this point, or is that still undecided enough to the management company?
It, it hasn't been determined by the management company, but we've been saying all along that we would be offering the service at the times that would not be heavy traffic. You know, the, the, the rush hour or the, you know, the peak hour traffic times. And generally speaking, the, the times that are convenient for, for most seniors would probably be between ten and, I don't know, two-thirty or so. So it, that's not something that we've determined, but it, it, it will be, it will be made in, the decision will be made in a logical way.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
I just wanted to remind us that we're talking here not just about the residents, but we're also talking about staff. And staff hours are going to be skewed in such a way that they won't take place during the peak hours necessarily, but they, that means that people coming in to make breakfast, you're going to be coming in quite early. And presumably, we hope, arriving at the T station and are gonna need a ride, or at least some of them will. I mean, obviously, it is walking distances on, on a nice day. So I just encourage us that it isn't just residents and that a certain amount of, of being available during what may turn out to be peak hours, or at least relatively high-traffic hours are, are necessary. That's part of the, of the scheduling enterprise.
Thank you.
And then finally, in section I, twenty-one, I don't know much about fertilizer. It talks about slow-release nitrogen fertilizer, but I do wonder if the board wants to require organic fertilizer, i.e. not chemical fertilizer. I think that Arlington is a place where people generally think that, you know, native species, natural, you know, try not to use as many chemicals, because we're in a dense area, and it will get into the water. So I would ask the board to consider requiring organic. Maybe Ms. Chapnet from the CONCOM would like to weigh in on that, and that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chapnet.
Um, obviously, organic, organic fertilizers are preferred. The only reason we didn't put that in the special condition is it wasn't consistent with, with requirements that we've been asking of other projects and that were in our bylaws at the time of this project. But if the board wants to consider adding that as a requirement, we would definitely support it.
Mr. Chairman, could I say? We will endeavor in every way to have this be We will endeavor in every way to have this be uh, as environmentally responsible um, a project as as can be. And although Stephanie has refrained from saying anything about the management of the our intended management of the conservation area, uh, we are, we have been in conversation with management people who are extraordinarily engaged in doing the right thing. And I won't say any more than that, but I I I can promise you that our intentions are that this will be an exemplary piece of property.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Stamps. Mr. McKinnon.
Yes, Matt McKinnon, Nine Little John Street.
Yes, sir.
So I'd like to apologize first for not being around when I had my hand raised earlier. I was curious, uh, given the forty B. Let me reword this. I was curious to to read uh, all the town officials that were against this development and whether those officials uh, should be noted in this draft document as being against the development.
Um, whether the town officials for and against should be listed in the decision?
Correct. As a description of the application.
Yeah. To some extent, it's not a it's not a vote tally. But, you know, it I I think we have noted in the decision that there, you know, it it certainly is controversial and you know, not
So controversial is
Other, you know, town officials, it's very easy to be opposed to a project that you don't have to put any skin in the game in terms of a decision.
Right, of course. Um, so this is not a small project, as we all know. I I believe it's a project that will kickstart a chain reaction of infrastructural upgrades to compensate for a development that's much too large. Um, and will just trigger a grotesque upending of this community. I would like to urge the ZBA. I would like to propose the ZBA to exclude uh, the four-story senior independent living facility for the development. Keeping with the forty B uh, recommendations on community size and density. You know, the the two-family townhouses are definitely similar in size and scope of the largest homes in the existing neighborhood. Um, and I also think the ZBA should research the change in the conservation portion of the land and and what that means to Arlington now and in the future. Um, as we've been well aware, the applicant has uh, has not been a good steward to the land at all. They were forced by the town of Arlington under a pressure of lawsuit uh, to clean up the land, which they they have done uh, within weeks of this public hearing. Um, so I don't think they should be allowed to continue to oversee its use in the future. I think it should be given to uh, the town or a reputable uh, conservation commission. Uh, but I do not think the uh, uh, the applicant should be named as owner of of this land. It's it's a true, it's just what they're trying to do to it now, and I I fear what they would be doing it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Rarick.
Hi, it's uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I think fifty years from now, people are going to um, look back and recognize that the outcome of uh, the conservation portion of this land and how it's stewarded, managed, um, improved over the next decades is is going to have more impact on the lives of people in the immediate neighborhood and and further further out than will the 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 construction project itself. You know, after the the many years of of promising that the land would be given to the town, um, I would ask that the um, that the board include in the findings. Uh, I think it's fi- finding seventy-three, um, which which right now is a recital of of the um, applicant's position on on how to handle the the conservation land. That 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 section should actually begin with a recital of fact that that for those many years, the the donation of the land to the town was was touted as an important factor in this uh, in this project, um, including in the original application to to mass housing. And the 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 idea of I I have to respond a little to what what Ms. Noise just said. These folks may have the best of intentions, but um, a a bunch of things are going to happen. One is oak tree is going to develop this, and then at some point it's going to get flipped. And at some point, it's going to get flipped again, and at some point, it's going to get flipped again. So the owner of the of the project many years from now is not going to be Gwen and Art, who may be here with the best of intentions. Um, but somebody that we, you know, we have no way of knowing who it's going to be. Um, so the current um, set of findings here, which is the applicant's proposed way of 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 going about protecting the land is sort of purports to be the the outcome of an MOU, but just to be clear, there is no MOU yet because because it hasn't been agreed to. And I think that the uh, the condition, which is, I think, condition M under under C two. Uh, the condition requires that that there be a successfully negotiated MOU. Um, I I know that um, Ms. Kiefer pushed back on that a little earlier. Um, but the board is going to need to come up with some way of incorporating that condition in order to give the parties a chance to really consider what's the best way to to manage this. You are hearing um, pushback. Um, I think you're going to hear much more tremendous pushback at the idea of of uh, the the applicant retaining ownership of the fee. If, if nothing else, the that that and and taking taking that away from the town. The the applicant's um, proposal appears to actually also rule out the town as the holder of a conservation restriction, um, which is um, it's something that absolutely has to be remain as a possibility for the outcome of a of a negotiated MOU. So my my request to the board in this is to ensure that um, that the continued uh, good faith negotiations around this can continue. That the possibilities for outcome of that include the fee being given to the town as originally promised, but also include the town being the uh, the grantee of a conservation restriction. Because it is, if nothing else, it is it is vital that the town have some property interest um, in this conservation land. Um, so uh, thank you for your for your hard work and good night. It's awfully late. Um, thank you all for sticking it out.
Thank you. Have Ms. Keep Lucas for a second time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Heather Keith-Lucas, Tenmont Street.
Yes, please.
Um, with respect to the existing conditions and open space in paragraph thirty-seven. There's been previous public comment on the neglect of the care for the property. And the use of the phrase not in pristine condition, I feel minimizes the environmental and public health issues that exist on the property. Um, so I'd I'd ask that the property also be described a little bit more for the sanitation and public health safety issues that have existed. Um, and and really, I'd I'd ask for the consideration to clearly point out that the language spells out that it's the applicant who neglected the property as well. On multiple occasions, our neighbors have themselves volunteered to clean up the site at the town's coordination at the town's expense. And I recognize maybe the details of this may be outside of the scope or jurisdiction, if you will, of the ZBA. But I do believe that they're prudent to the characterization of the property and the impact the applicant has had in in their neglect. And I do believe that it's relevant with respect to the change from the donation of the parcel to the town to beholder of that conservation parcel uh, to now being maintained by the applicant. And and to others' points, I I do think that it is relevant that the town had to threaten a legal suit to the applicant for the current cleanup that began in September uh, as referenced in more details. I think that's in section seventy-three B on page twenty-one. Uh, in section thirty-eight, which is on page twelve, which talks about the town and owner have taken action to rehouse and relocate the population. My understanding was that the applicant had not been engaged um, to assist in that effort. Uh, though Arlington and the surrounding towns have supported their work on on their own. Um, so I'm concerned that the characteristic also of if left unmanaged could also suggest that this development itself resolves the return of homeless encampment. Homelessness is a complicated public health matter and uh, the management of a property doesn't solve for this. I think it's misleading to suggest even inadvertently, if if that wasn't the intent, that this development results in solving the encampments and homelessness. And so I just asked the ZBA to consider alternative wording here.
Which paragraph was that in?
A sec- uh, paragraph, oh, sorry, thirty-eight on page twelve. Sometimes it's the smallest sentences that cause the most problems.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank you. And the committee members um, and the consultants you've had during these hearings, and thank you for your dedication.
Thank you very much. It's very kind of you. Um, are there any further public comments? Once going twice. Close the public comment period. The public comment period for this hearing is now closed. Thank you all for your participation and sharing the knowledge of your neighborhood. Um, the resolution of this process has been made better and far better informed by by everyone's participation, and I really appreciate everyone sticking with us through a very long night. So the question before the board now uh, is do we have sufficient information to close the public hearing tonight? And to move on to the deliberation phase of the comprehensive permit review. So if we if we feel we're ready, then we can we can vote in the affirmative on that. Um, if not, we would need to uh, discuss the possibility of an extension or continuation with the with the applicant, which is something we had indicated at the prior hearing. We were going to try to avoid at all costs. Mr. Hamlin.
Um, I've got a couple of questions that I'd like to ask a applicant before we close it, but I'm I'm sort of we're now four minutes, we're now four hours and eight minutes into this meeting, so it already sort of counts as two hearings. And I I do think that we'll probably be able to, I mean, eventually, we're going to have to call, it's going to, the clock is going to expire. But I'm interested in following up on what Mr. Rarick said. Um, if, and I wonder if it if my understanding is correct, that if the town is not the grantee of the conservation restriction, the town has no say in what is in the conservation that what is in the CR, is that right?
Um, Stephanie can answer this, but I'll, I would might want to add something to it, but Stephanie.
Oh, I I was, uh, I would I would respond that the uh, the applicant has um, offered to work um, with the town through the MOU process to um, identify kind of the um, the activities that would be allowed, would not be allowed. Um, and so uh, whether or not it's the town that becomes the holder of the restriction, um, there there's there's, and and there always has been a willingness of the applicant to work with the town to um, work towards what would be allowed within the area and what would not be allowed within the area.
If if uh, it became necessary to enforce the terms of the restriction, would the town be entitled to do that as some sort of a third-party beneficiary?
Paul, perhaps you can weigh in, but on the traditional CR, that it the municipality also signs it, I believe. Isn't that correct? We have this date and then the uh, it would go before the
I don't think the municipality signs it unless they're a party.
And it's their party.
Yeah, if it's a third party that's holding the CR, then they would be the signatory to it. Generally speaking, Patrick, you're correct. If the town is not a party to the conservation restriction, it's not going to have any rights to enforce it. However, that is something that could be covered in the
Um, and I guess the shifting gears a little bit. I'm wondering. I I think, as you've heard tonight, the community, and it's not just the people who are here too, if you've been sort of watching the the blaze on the internet today, are very concerned just because of all the distrust that's built up over the years, if nothing else, are very concerned with the prospect of the owner retaining the ownership of uh, the fee interest in the open space parcel. After so many years in which that has not been thought of uh, at least publicly as as an option. And part part of the problem there is a suspicion that somehow, notwithstanding these other documents, most of which have not been concluded, somehow it's the preservation of that parcel and its management in an appropriate way isn't really guaranteed because ultimately the owner has the ability to do something. And we don't know exactly what it is, uh, but surely he wants to keep the fee interest for some reason. And I guess I'd like to understand what it is that that reason is. Uh, and to what extent it really is is necessary or advisable to uh, for the the owner to to retain ownership. Obviously, he can. Uh, I mean, it's up to him whether to grant the what, how to handle that parcel up to a point, but I'm I'm wondering sort of what what the reasons is. What are the what are the what are the sticks he's holding on to in this bundle of sticks that is important to him and that gives him gives that gives that value to him. Because we need to know that in order to have some sense of of what the significance is of 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 changing course now after so long.
Sure. Um, through the chairman, um, Mr. Hamlin, the uh, your your question is uh, it's it's an understandable question. Um, and I I think we've discussed this to some degree in prior hearings, but um, the the conservation parcel is is really like the the front door, the front yard of the independent living. And so the owner does have an interest that that it be maintained and that it's um, you know, coextensive with, you know, the views from the residents of the independent moving building. And I think that that's an important factor. Um, and so, you know, yes, it's not a development stick that the owner is proposing to hold on to and and, you know, obviously, through the conservation restriction, the the race to develop, those are given up, but it's it's the But it's, it's the, it is so part and parcel of like what the look of the independent living is that it's, they find that it's important to, to keep that. And with respect to, um, kind of what other factors go into this, and I know that, um, some of the, like the, the work sessions that have gone on with the town that obviously wasn't within the ZBA process. Um, but there was also hesitancy by the town to, um, to acquire the property and they were, they didn't seem to want to ha- to have it within those initial discussions. And I think that the town wasn't certain exactly, um, and, and I think that the applicant in working through, you know, well, what should I do? Should I donate it to a third party? Should I, and then it came to the realization that it just made sense for the continuity of the, uh, the independent living to like to make certain that it looks nice, um, that it's that front lawn to that property.
Let me just add a bit to that. We discussed that internally a fair amount, and I, I think that, um, there were two things. Number one, the, uh, the opinion was on, on our side that the town was reluctant to take title to it.
For years.
For years. And we, you know, we always intended to give it away one way or the other. But I think what emerged is, um, the value of marketing, uh, the independent living facility to a third party. We want to get the ideal, uh, the, the best possible person in to, to develop that, uh, property as an independent living facility. This is a real skill. And, uh, we've actually owned one, uh, not quite the same format, but we know what, what a skillful organization can do and what a an organization that not is not so skillful. And the feeling was that the, it would be extremely important in, in marketing that project. Uh, as Stephanie was just saying, to control what the front yard is. In other words, trusting, uh, you know, you know, this, the, the town may have the very best of intentions, but, uh, there's nothing like self-interest to, to really get out there and make that a wonderful, wonderful place. And I think part of being wonderful, and Gwen and I both are very strong in that, is having public use. You know, what'll be, uh, the front yard should be something that, uh, is a real amenity for the people that live there. They're seeing activity, they're seeing kids, they're seeing, uh, you know, whatever transpires, boardwalks. And as Gwen mentioned, we've talked to people that might take that over that would be, uh, you know, the right kind. In fact, people that have worked with people in Arlington where I go for whatever reason, I'm disclosing that right now, but these are, uh, we've worked on that to get the right thing to happen there. Uh, and it, it really does have to do with the, uh, creating an amenity for that, uh, independent living facility and controlling it so that it's, it's coordinated and integrated.
I, I, I have to add that I, I, the, the concern that's being expressed is very well deserved. And, and that the, the opportunity to do something that is above and beyond what people are thinking could happen, I think is there. And, and I, in all honesty, this last two or three weeks has, has been the first time that there has been an ex, you know, a real expression of, of, of interest and from, you know, the, the town should acquire and manage that property. For years, we've talked about, about that being a possibility and that the, the, the feedback has been going from lukewarm to negative about that. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm really kind of, uh, taken aback by the notion that we have changed our mind. I have been talking with a number of e- entities about the possibility of, of, of managing that property in a, in a very respectful and town, um, uh, considering way that, that for the public benefit. And what that's still the, the track we're on from an environmental, from a social and from a, uh, a conservation standpoint. So I, I, I just, I'm being a little bit defensive about this because we've, we've worked hard on this and we're not going to disappoint you.
Mr. Chair. Step in for a second here. So it's ten minutes to midnight. I do want to confirm with Paul, um, so we are legally required to close a public hearing. Um, and the date for that is October twenty-first. Does that mean we have to close it before October twenty-first or can we close it on October twenty-first?
No, we, we were extended to October twenty-first. So, so if we go past midnight, it doesn't mean that we're missed our deadline.
Okay.
I'm encouraging you to go past midnight.
Mr. Chairman, I have just one more. Valid only until twelve-thirty. So just.
I just wanted to, it's, it's obvious that there are some interests that are involved here. And I'm, I would like to encourage, there's no way, the, the ZBA is obviously not going to negotiate anything with the applicant or anything else. That's not our job. Uh, and we're going to go into, into, uh, a session where we have to pretend that we don't know anything more, uh, in a, pretty quickly. I, keeping the, keeping the fee interest is keeping a black box. Nobody knows exactly which bundles, which sticks are in there. And I think that it maximizes the degree of distrust, at least on the part of residents of Arlington and, and maybe others for the, sort of the residual interest that everything that isn't already dealt with is going, is mine uh, to result in the owner. I understand what Gwen and Art have, say about, about that. And I just want to encourage them as they discuss this with the town and encourage the town as they discuss this with, uh, the applicant, that they find a way of accommodating these interests of making sure that the front yard of the building is, meets the standards and that the appropriate control is given over the management of the facility to make that happen. But to think that, that ultimately an acceptable, it is far more acceptable for the fee to go to somebody else who can, who can hold it so that there are no surprises. Uh, when you consult brilliant lawyers like Stephanie down the road and suddenly they, they think of something that we didn't think of because we're not smart enough yet to do that. Um, so I mean, the, the private ordering is private ordering. There's lots and lots of ways of doing it, and I'm sure that you've been thinking about it. I'd just like to plant the idea that it's not an easy thing to handle it by reserving the fee. That that makes, that maximizes the amount of distrust and makes everything a lot harder. And I'm sort of hoping that when there's a set of legal arrangements that manage how this works, something that we won't be a part of, that we're able to that, but that will eventually probably control, uh, that you've seriously considered the implications of continuing on the path that you're on.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Revellak.
I, I just want to follow up a little bit on that discussion. In my recollection, uh, there has been hesitancy on the town's behalf when it come, when it's, you know, the idea of uh, the town taking ownership of this property has come up. I think Mr. Chapdalen's, um, letter to the board that's included on the agenda materials for this week is just the most recent example. Now, as a board, we cannot acquire or hold property. Uh, that's something only town meeting can do, and we cannot obligate town meeting or the, we, we can't obligate any entity in the town to take ownership of the property. So, I mean, one thing I just would like to mention for the folks who are still with us is that it is entirely possible that, um, you know, we can't, even if the applicants wanted to give the property to the town, there is no, uh, guarantee that the town would ultimately accept it. And in our decision, we are just going to have to, you know, accommodate an either or. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Klein, may I comment briefly? This is Susan Chapman.
Um, yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I, I actually disagree, um, that the town showed extreme reluctance. Um, if you read the memo from Adam Chapdalen, in summary, it's talking about the reluctance of accepting a parcel that may have significant contamination. And that the town then would have to, um, put up, you know, funds or, or, uh, clean it up or help clean it up. That's the issue there. It wasn't that the town was reluctant to accept it. The town is reluctant to accept a parcel that they don't know what's on it. So in conclusion to that letter, Adam Chapdalen said, if a transfer of land were contemplated by the ZBA as a condition of the forty B permit, a memorandum of understanding with detailed timelines and provisions to achieve the foregoing, meaning cleanup and understanding that it wasn't a hazardous waysite would need, would be necessary. So the town did not say they would not accept the property. The town put conditions on the acceptance of the property. I will also remind, um, the ZBA when you're deliberating to look at other conservation restrictions that we have in the town. And, um, if you need to look at them, um, they're in, in town, uh, documents. We have a conservation restriction on Elizabeth Island. We have a conservation restriction on Sims, and I believe there's one other small one. So, um, I maintain that this, this, this change from the applicant, um, proposing to keep the property rather than transferring it to the town is, is not necessarily, it's not in the town's interest. I will also just make one more statement that a conservation area is not first and foremost a public amenity. That is not what a conservation area is. If this is supposed to be a nice entrance or a nice lawn, that is not a conservation area. A conservation restriction saves a resource for the environment, for wildlife habitat, for wetland, to allow it to flood, so it holds floodwater. It is not first and foremost a public amenity. That doesn't mean there can't be some boardwalks, et cetera, but that is not the purpose of a conservation restriction. And finally, I will just end with a formal conservation restriction must be approved by the state. So the state would have to approve that this would be a conservation restriction. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So given the, is there any?
I, I'd like to just add, add one more thing. I, I'm probably repeating myself a little bit. As far as the value, I mean, there's no development value anymore in the parcel, so there's no economic reason other than how that parcel relates to the actual senior living facility. And that creates some self-interest. I think that we'll police that property, make it viable, work on it. There'll be money supplied to do things. There'll be, uh, uh, we thought about some kind of a, uh, a, a space inside our building to have equipment to help, uh, sustain it. I, I really think it's in the, in the town's best interest to have it done this way. And, and what would happen, I think if we started doing it the other way, I think, as, as you know, the Gwen and I are development agents here. We're, we're not the owner, we're the applicant. And, um, I certainly know that the, the, I, I think the, um, owner of the land would not be particularly adverse to, uh, giving it away because that's how we started this whole thing. Uh, thinking that we give it away and then we met resistance, whatever it said, there, there were a lot of reasons that we were not going there. But I think then we'd have to start saying, well, we'll give you the land, but by the way, we want you to do blah, 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 blah. So our front yard is protected. And that's, that shouldn't have to be done, you know? I mean, we, we will do that just out of self-interest. Whoever owns the senior living facility would just have self-interest in doing that. Where if we, if somebody else has control of it, i.e. the town, and we give it away, I think that we'd start to have to haggle about, well, you know, we'll clean it up to some, you know, in the MOU. We're talking about a lot of things that we do. And we're willing to do whatever we want in the MOU. You know, we've been very cooperative in that. Anyhow, it's, it's not an easy one. I understand that. And it's, maybe it's always better to own something than to not, or I don't know. But, um, I, I really think that, uh, we're going to bring, particularly Gwen, a lot of energy to making that a great place.
So unless there's objection, I'm going to close discussion. So we, because we, we do need to move on to the vote here and make sure we get all our Ts crossed and Is dotted before we, uh, we, we run out of time here.
Let me see that.
So with that. So as a board, is there anyone who feels that we need to, we need an extension of time? Lots of shaking heads. So with that in mind, may I have a motion to close the public hearing for Thorndike Place?
Mr. Chairman.
Hamlet.
This is my favorite part of the whole evening. I moved that we closed the public hearing in the Thorndike case.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Revellak. Uh, vote of the board, uh, Mr. DuPont.
Hi.
Mr. Hanlon.
Hi.
Mr. Mills.
Hi.
Mr. O'Rourke. Mr. O'Rourke.
Hi.
See you there. Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Revellak.
Hi.
Forward.
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. The public hearing for Thorndike Place is now closed. So now the board has forty days to deliberate and finalize its decision. Um, under state law, the board is no longer allowed to receive commentary or testimony and must rely on the extensive record amassed over the last five years. Uh, deliberative sessions are held in public, but will only include members of the board and our legal consultant. So we have a date scheduled to our first deliberative meeting, uh, we had set at the previous hearing. Uh, will be Thursday, October twenty-eighth at seven-thirty PM. And so, uh, just briefly going down the, to the upcoming schedule, uh, we do have a regular set of hearings scheduled for Tuesday, October twenty-sixth. I believe we have two continuances and three new cases on that evening. I can't recall specifically. Uh, and we also have some, uh, decisions to approve and I believe some minutes to approve at that hearing as well. And as just said, Thursday, October twenty-eighth at seven-thirty PM is the first deliberation session for the decision on Thorndike Place. Um, and we have, um, discussed at the previous hearing that we are going to try um, and make sure that the final vote, um, on the final decision take place no later than Tuesday, November twenty-third, which is well within the, the forty day period. Any questions about that schedule? Hearing none. Thank you all for your participation in tonight's meeting of the Arlington zoning board of appeals. Appreciate everyone's patience throughout this very long meeting. Um, especially wish to thank Rick Valorelli, Vincent Lee, Kelly Lineama, and everyone else who has put in time putting together their materials for us or scheduling these meetings or helping to run these meetings or anything else. Um, this is, you know, really a, a, a full-time effort to support the ZBA and it is greatly appreciated. Please note the purpose of the board's recording this meeting is to ensure a creation of an accurate record of the proceedings. It's our understanding the recording made by ACMI will be available on demand at acmi.tv within the coming days. If anyone has comments or recommendations, please send them via email to zba@town dot Arlington dot U S. That email address is also listed on the ZBA's website. And to conclude tonight's meeting, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
No move, Mr. Hanlon. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Uh, vote of the board, Mr. DuPont.
Hi.
Mr. Hanlon.
Hi.
Mills. Mr. Revellak. Mr. Ford. The chair votes aye. The board is adjourned. Thank you all very, very much.
Good night, good morning.
You realize this gives us another day in our forty days.